Good evening, everyone. Thank you for tuning into our virtual city council meeting of July 19th, 2021. My name is Diane Howard. I'm the mayor of Redwood City. And attending the meeting tonight via teleconference are council members Aguirre, Espinoza Garnica, Gee, Ready, and Smith, Vice Mayor Hale, and myself. Items for this evening will be taken in the order that they are listed on the agenda. I will now ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Good evening, Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. Councilmember Gee.
Here.
Councilmember Ready.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask Councilmember Ready if she will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ready. Now moving on to item number four. At this time, we will take public comment on any items that are not on the agenda. I'll now turn it over to the city clerk to facilitate public comment on any items not on the agenda. Ms. Aguilar?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for general public comment. And as the mayor mentioned on items not on the agenda, if you wish to speak on one of the board commissioner committee work plans, you will have that opportunity to do that when each of those items is called. So if you could please follow the instructions on the screen and raise your hand now and keep your hand raised if you wish to make public comments. Just give it a minute. If you're joining us by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Okay, it looks like we have three hands raised and each, each, each person will be given two minutes to make your public comment. Our first speaker is Allison M. And our last speaker will be Clara Jackal. After Clara speaks, we will close public comment for this section. And anybody who's not able to make your live public comment, you can submit your comment to the council by email at council@redwoodcity.org. Okay, we will start with Allison M., who will be followed by call in user number one. The timer will begin when you start speaking.
Thank you, Pam. Good evening. I wanted to ask the council first if there is information on the website respecting the reallocation of the money that was wrongly flagged by the state in the redevelopment. I think it's $10 million and the decision happened in Sacramento in December of 2020, and it's been finalized, I believe, in April of 2021, which I believe means that $10 million for low income and moderate income affordable housing should be coming back to Redwood City. And I'd like to see if we can get a brief on that up on the website. If it's there and I missed it, I apologize. I do know that it's been briefed and reported on as the litigation was going on for the past decade. But I didn't see anything communicating what it means now for when this funding will be available and how it will be used and how soon. So I think it's great news if this means the money comes back. And I'd just like to see if I can get a report back on that at a future meeting or on the website. And then I'd also like to urge the council to meet in closed session and approve mediation and a settlement for Dock Town that keeps at least a 70 Slip Marina that ends any prospect of eviction. We still in the middle of a pandemic. It's reemerging. I don't think any city should be in the business of evicting its tenants. This is not a situation of non-payment of rent. We would like you to undertake a public process over here in the relocation litigation, which goes to trial August 2nd. Before Judge Weiner, we got hundreds and if not thousands of pages of documents. And in that were dozens, if not hundreds, 100 emails of people asking you to do a public project for the Inner Harbor. And please keep a public access marina with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Allison. Our next speaker is call in user one. And call in user one will be followed by Clara Jackal, who will be our last speaker.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marcelina Luna. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you, yes. I just want to bring up some topics. I know that during our last city council meeting on June 28th, Vice Mayor Hale tried to tie her yes vote to maybe losing grant funds funding for Hopkins Avenue project. And I believe this is what she was talking about, that the cities windled themselves into the Samhail County Transportation Authority funds with questionable arguments and took away money from other projects that would have deserved it more. And then Mayor Howard and the city manager were making it sound like the city hasn't really looked at equity and social justice in their projects before, since our new equity officer just started. This isn't true. In that case, staff got this grant partly because they called Hopkins Avenue a community of concern. And we know that communities of concern are identified by census tracked according to eight disadvantage factors: minority residents, low-income residents, non-English language speakers, zero-car households, seniors ages 75 plus, persons with disabilities, single-parent households, and cost-buried renters. So this is really not a true equity prioritizing project that went to Hopkins. So that money really should have gone to deserving neighborhoods. And I also want to support what Allison was mentioning about how the city tried to put $10.2 million in funds to the general fund, which were meant for affordable housing. This would have saved so many households from being evicted or having to move out of the area because the prices of the rents were astronomical. So if anyone's listening that's interested, please visit the Public Interest Law Project and in their search box type in Samhail County. And everyone could see what this case was all about, that Redwood City lost on the California Supreme Court. Also, I'm urging the city to stop the, all of that going on with Dock Town. We need to stop wasting our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcelina. Our next and last speaker is Clara Jackal.
Yeah, thank you so much. I would like to echo the points made by the previous speakers. I'm also very interested in hearing now that the funding from the previous redevelopment agency has been, it's been clarified by the court that this should be designated for affordable housing. I'd like to understand what, how the city was going to plan to use that money and how soon projects would be undertaken and where that could be applied. Because with housing being a priority, there'll be a key source of resources for that. And also I would like to second the points about, especially during pandemic and with a focus on housing, we should keep residents in their homes, including those who live in Dock Town. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Clara. That concludes public comment for this portion of the agenda. I will turn the meeting back over to Mayor Howard. If you are not able to make your comment, again, you can email your comments to the council@council@redwoodcity.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Appreciate your handling the public comment. I know a couple of questions were brought up around the $10 million returned from the state. I was hoping I could ask the city manager. I do believe we do have that information available. But I was hoping you might mention where people could find any additional information about that $10 million. Ms. Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. So I would need to verify if we have received those funds yet. The funds have been authorized to be returned to the city. And when they are returned, they would be placed in our housing fund. So to be used for a future affordable housing project. There's a timeline for that return, and I don't have that fresh with me right at the moment. But the intention certainly would be to try to apply those funds toward affordable housing as soon as we could have the staff resources to find a suitable project. So certainly, we were pleased to be awarded the funds and had been arguing for those retained funds for some period of time, and we'll be looking for opportunities to bring forward a project for council's consideration.
Thank you very much for that update. I appreciate it. Okay, moving on to item number five, and that's our boards, commissions, and committee reports. And 5A, we're going to start this evening with going over the Planning Commission work plan for fiscal year 2021, 22, and fiscal year 2022, 2023. Our Assistant Community Development and Transportation Director and Planning Commission Staff Liaison, Sue Exline, will introduce the item. And Planning Commission Chair Nancy Radcliffe will give the presentation. So we'll start with Ms. Exline.
Good evening, Mayor Howard, and good evening, city council members. If you could advance to the next line. So the Planning Commission members include Chair Nancy Radcliffe, Vice Chair Rick Hunter, Kevin Bondano, Isabella Chu, Philippe Quonot Gratz, Elmar Martinez, and Jessica Munier. I'm going to pass over the presentation now to Chair Radcliffe and to Vice Chair Hunter to give you some background and additional information on the work plan.
Okay. This is Exline. Thank you, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and council for letting us present this to you tonight. I am going to let our Vice Chair, Commissioner Hunter, start off the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Chair Radcliffe. And thank you, Sue. And I apologize to the council that I don't know why my video is not working here. We usually have a workaround that the city has provided to get the, the background to display, but it is not. So I apologize for that. I'm going to go over the first couple of slides, which is just the background of the planning commission, our mission statement, and the functions of the planning commission. I'm sure that you are all well aware of these, and I know that several of you council members have served on this planning commission in the past. But for the benefit of the public, I want to start with the mission statement of the planning commission. And this is from our bylaws. And there are three elements to it. The first is to strive for the best interest of the city of Redwood City and to evaluate all proposals as to the best interest of the entire community. The second one is to maintain high moral and ethical standards. And the third is to permit all segments of the community to express their views and to respect such viewpoints. I think it's noteworthy that the first and third items here directly align with the city's foundational guiding principle, which Chair Radcliffe will talk about later, the foundational guiding principle of putting equity first so that policies serve the entire community. Next slide, please. So the key functions of the planning commission, and this is in the ordinance that we operate under. There are really four key functions. The first is what is referred to as our quasi-judicial function. And that is to make decisions on land use entitlements, environmental documents. That is the, that is the function that we spend most of our time and our work on. Those are projects that come to us that we are adjudicating the land use entitlements for. So those are not projects that we initiate or that city council initiates. Those are things that come to us and we hold public hearings and adjudicate the decisions. The other functions, key functions, are to make recommendations to the city council on zoning and general plan amendments, and to make recommendations to the council on historic resources. And for both of those, of course, we hold public hearings, receive community input, and then make recommendations to the council. And finally, the last function is to appoint members of the Historic Resources Advisory Committee and the Architectural Advisory Committee. And with that, I will pass the baton on to Chair Radcliffe.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hunter. So now we'll go to reviewing the Planning Commission work plan for the last few years. As you know, our work plan is somewhat regulated by what we must do by the state law and also what comes in-house. So we have a lot of different balls in our courts. So our work plan, we collaborate with our other boards and commissions, not only the ones that we appoint members to, but also housing and human concerns. And this is an ongoing relationship that we have with these boards. We also do ongoing professional development and training. This is something that our commissioners are very proud, that we continue to update ourselves on what is currently good land use. Next is our general plan. General plan is something that we do under state regulations. So this is always a continuing process. Right now, we are updating the housing element, the safety element, and the environmental justice element. Next, we have our residential design guidelines. I am so happy to say, hopefully tomorrow night will be our very last meeting on this subject. We hope to complete it tomorrow evening, and we will have our residential guidelines that will help our residents go forward as they do remodeling and building new homes. Then we are also doing a preparation for the downtown precise plan amendments. And this is another ongoing project. Next slide, please. Being an advisory commission to the council, our initiatives and goals align with those of the council. Our fundamental guiding principle, of course, is Redwood City will put equity first, urging a collective restart to the policies that serve the entire community. And I want to underline entire community. Under housing, we meet our community goals and needs. We work very hard. And we're very proud of the amount of affordable housing in all levels that we have created in Redwood City. We're looking at transportation. We are continually looking at different ways to promote safe and accessible transportation for our citizens. Then we have our children and youth. We love creating opportunities with children and youth and look at all sorts of safety areas, as well as partnering with our parks to make sure that we have really accessible parks and recreation. Next slide, please. So our work plan for the upcoming next two years, we have ongoing goals. This is to collaborate with our city boards and commissions, including Historic Resources Committee and Architectural Advisory Committee. These are the two advisory commissions that we appoint the members to. We also have a great working relationship with Housing and Human Concerns. We do a joint meeting at least once a year, if not more often. We do ongoing professional training and development. As you know, the League of California Cities has a Planning Commission Academy. Two of our members are very brand-new members whose first meeting is tomorrow night, are the only ones who have not completed this academy. And we always do, we go to the seminars and we really try to stay on point with what is current. Next slide, please. Our specific goals. We have the housing element and the environmental justice element coming before us soon. We have amendments to the downtown precise plan for the gatekeeper projects that his council has just recently put forward. We're very excited about working on those and fitting them into the downtown precise plan. We also have some amendments coming for the downtown precise plan transit district. We are really looking forward to creating and working on the new central Redwood City plan and of course, the inner harbor plan. So that, council, is what the planning commission has been up to. And do you have any feedback or questions for us?
Thank you very much, Chair Radcliffe and Vice Chair Hunter. Thank you for your presentation. So we're going to do council questions right now. We'll start with Councilmember Ready.
I apologize, Mayor. It appears that you want, I did not have a question. I had a comment. And so it appears that you want to go to public first. Is that correct?
Actually, the way I think we have it set up, that because this is a study session, so to speak, I'm going to check with our city attorney, just to be sure that we're in the right order.
If it's not in, then I'm happy to speak first.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our city attorney to address that.
Thank you, Mayor. These actually are action items where the council will be asked to bless each of the board's plans. And so if we could have public comment before the council takes action, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So we will start with public comment. So I will turn it over to our city clerk, and she will address the public comment. Ms. Aguilar?
Hi, Madam Mayor. I actually had a clarifying question, if that's okay.
Great. Councilmember Smith, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. I'm wondering the point about the residential design guidelines. I believe that the council received a communication that explained that the residential design guidelines would either not be moving forward or moving forward in a very limited scope due to potential conflicts that are associated with state law at the moment, in reference to the potential limits on housing development that would come from it. So I was wondering if anyone can speak to that.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. You are right. The state has given us some restrictions. And the guidelines are strictly that they are guidelines. They are not anything that we really have any teeth to, but they are guidelines so that our community can have a little help if they need it or want it in going forward with either a remodel or a new home that will fit nicely into the neighborhood that they're dealing with. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you so much, Chair Radcliffe. I just have one quick follow-up question maybe for your staff. So if there are no, as you say, teeth to the residential design guidelines, what does this mean in terms of its place in the larger zoning and development context of the city? So does that mean that people don't need to get those? They're just there? They can come get them? Is there any obligation to consider that a homeowner who's remodeling a building? Any information on how that works, if you can?
I think probably both Ms. Exline and I will answer that question. These are guidelines, more architectural type of guidelines. Our zoning and all of that will remain as is. These are just guidelines for structural. Ms. Exline, did you want to elaborate on that?
Sure, I can add in, and I also see the city attorney, I think she put her hand up and down maybe. So Veronica, if you want to chime in as well, let me know. What's before the commission tomorrow is that it is an informational session and the residential reference guide will be available to the public as a best practices. And it will not be adopted. So if that clarifies.
And Councilmember Smith, getting to your direct question about how that fits within the zoning code, this falls outside of the planning commission's decision-making authority. It is exactly as Ms. Exline mentioned, for reference purposes for the community. There's a lot of body of work in that document, and so we believe it'll be very helpful for the community.
I appreciate your response.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Those were good clarifying questions. So now we'll move on to public comment, and I'll turn it over to our city clerk, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for public comment on item 5A, and that is the Planning Commission work plan, both the past work plan and their future work plan. If you'd like to make public comment, please raise your hand now and keep your hand raised so that we can see how many speakers we have. If you're joining by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. It looks like we had, we had three speakers, but now we have two. Let's see if Mr. Brown wanted to raise his hand still. No. Okay, hold on. So we have three speakers. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. I'll call your name two at a time so that you can get ready. Our, okay, our first speaker is Pat WH3, and well, now we have two speakers. Our last speaker will be Allison M. The timer will begin once you start speaking. Go ahead, Pat WH3.
Thank you. Oh, I want to express a concern that I have. Can folks hear me or not?
I can hear you.
You can? Okay.
Yes.
I want to express a concern that I felt during the first slide, or the slide the gentleman put up and a reference that he made to, it's like this commission is already supporting the racial equity lens of the county because the word "everyone" is used. What's bothersome about this to me is that "everyone" doesn't necessarily mean literally "everyone." I understand that there are cities formed throughout the United States, including this one, that wanted equity for everyone, which turned out to be everyone mostly well-heeled Caucasians. Were you to really have a racial equity lens on the work you would do, you would be more precise. You would say for African-American residents, that next residence, this minority group or that minority group. Sorry, everyone is kind of like a benign neglect. Be specific. Make sure who is included in everyone and make sure it is actually and really everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Our next and last speaker is Allison M. Go ahead, Allison.
Hi, okay. Thanks. I really appreciate the presentation. And it's the first time I saw a reference to the inner harbor plan. And I did look on the website, as well as looking on the website for the affordable housing stuff. And I appreciate the city manager's report back on that. And her mention that she would also supply that information when it's refunded, the affordable housing money. So I would like to know more about the inner harbor plan and when that's going to come, before the planning commission. And there's a lot of parcels over here. There's a lot of moving pieces. I think there's a lot of interest in keeping a public marina of some size. The city has really allowed Dock Town kind of west of Slip 70 toward 101 to go into disrepair, like kind of meeting the legal definition of waste. And it's unfortunate, but there's a lot of waste that happens through non-use and non-maintenance. But anyway, Slip 70 and the remainder down to the launch ramp is still a very good, presentable, public access marina. And I'd like that to be part of the inner harbor task force and for no action taken against Dock Town, such as removing slips or pilings, and for the removing people until that public process has come to pass. I know there's consideration of a park. There's a land swap in the works with the county. There's all kinds of, you know, moving parts like the Blomquist Extension and lease backs and, you know, where BIAC is going to be. So all kinds of things. And I just feel like the public, having all of the sunshine on that and being able to participate, that accountability and transparency is. having all of the sunshine on that and being able to participate, that accountability and transparency is necessary. And Dock Town should be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. That concludes public comment on item 5A. I'll turn it back over to Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Now it's time for council questions and discussion. Who would like to begin? Vice Mayor Hale?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chair Radcliffe, Vice Chair Hunter. I'm wondering if you could switch back or staff could flip back to the slide that shows most of the goals and the project work that'll be achieved. There, wait, yes, this is it. So I think, you know, one of the ones that I just wanted to call attention to is the housing element and how much that does tie to our foundational equity guiding principle. We have learned so much over the last couple of years about how housing has been exclusionary in many cases and the real opportunity with zoning to make housing opportunity more inclusive. And I know that this is going to be a part of a robust community conversation and that the planning commission will be a major body in convening that conversation. And so I think that that is such incredibly important work. And I look forward to seeing all the ways in which you get to engage with the community so that we hear what are all the housing concerns people have and what are some of the creative solutions that the community and our staff can come up with to meet both our housing needs and then also, you know, to the point you may achieve this assignment that we have from the state, which is fulfilling our arena numbers, which are a set of numeric goals that we have to show our ability to achieve in terms of fulfilling housing. So I think this is one of the most important. There's so many important things on this list. But that one really stands out to me in terms of the urgency within the community and the impact it'll have. Thank you very much for your time and your work and to all members of the commission who I believe most of you are on. Thank you all so much for your work. Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. We really are looking forward to this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you Chair Radcliffe and Vice Chair Hunter and the other members of the planning commission for this amazing work plan. For people who are uninitiated, they may not realize what this actually means. But in my view, there are few people who work harder than the members of the planning commission. And I know that this list represents that, how hard your work will be in the next two years. So I applaud you and I thank you for this very comprehensive work plan. I do have a couple of suggestions, if I might. It wasn't listed in your slides, but I am referring to step three under the attachment of the staff report. And so I apologize that I'm not referring to a slide. I apologize to our community that I am referring to a staff report. So under step three, it's the city's strategic initiatives. And we repeat, many of us repeat, that we want housing at all income levels. So I'm specifically referring to the item that says protect housing options for low and middle-income residents. And my request is that we actually spell that out. If we are indeed talking about housing for all income levels, I would like "very low" and "extremely low" to be added. I want to spell that out, that we are looking at indeed all income levels. And then again, to the next bullet point, again, refers to moderate, low. And there we have very low, but I want extremely low added to that list. And then the final bullet in that category is partner on housing opportunities for unique populations. And I would like, if you would, to include, to add comma, including disabled and seniors. These are indeed unique populations that are sometimes overlooked, and so I would like them added. But that's all I have. And again, I just applaud you for this work and for this work plan. And I wish you well because you're going to need a lot of support. And if there's anything I can do to support you in this effort, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next is Councilmember Jeff G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and Chair Radcliffe and Vice Chair Hunter, thank you for your presentation this evening. Just a couple of comments, particularly on this slide. When we look at your two-year work plan, maybe managing our expectations and everyone's expectations, is the expectation that all of this work will be done by December 31st, 2022? So, you know, maybe you can, Chair Radcliffe and Vice Chair Hunter, kind of talk a little bit more about that so that I don't expect that it's going to be all done by December 31st.
Thank you, Councilmember. You're right. It is not going to be done by December 31st, 2022. A lot of our elements are ongoing elements, as you know, often decades-long work. And it's something for the commission to keep in front of us and to keep fine-tuning as we learn and progress and as different elements change. We also get a lot of direction from the state level, and sometimes that kind of changes what we're doing down in planning. So I would say that all of these are very much ongoing projects that the commission will have before us for a long time.
Thank you. I mean, I haven't been on the planning commission with you. That can take a very long time. Which leads me to the second part of my question is the durability of the work product of the commission. Some of these things can take two years, three years, five years, 10 years. How does the planning commission and the council work together to make sure that whatever comes forward is durable over time?
Well, as we both know, things will always change over time, often by direction from the state. Fortunately, we have a very nice working relationship with our city council and we do some joint meetings at least. I believe we try to get them in once a year so that we can have conversations about what's really changing and what's imperative to our community. But once again, these are documents that are always in flow. They're always going to be changing and until the document is come to a term and we go forward with something new. For instance, our downtown precise plan, that's coming toward the end of its lifetime. But replacing that is going to be our central Redwood City plan. So it ebbs and flows, as you know.
Right. Thank you, Chair Radcliffe. And just my final question is, I mean, I appreciate the work plan and the tie to the council's strategic priorities. But in some ways, I don't necessarily see the strategic priorities as a vision of the council for, let's say, 2040, 2050. To what extent, if the council were able to present our community and our boards and commissions with a vision for our city in the future, would that be helpful to the planning commission?
Absolutely. Any forward thinking is always very helpful. Yes, that would be delightful. Thank you.
Councilmember G, do you have any additional questions? Hearing no additional questions, we'll move on to Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Chair Radcliffe and Vice Chair Hunter for being here tonight. Of course, all the members of the planning commission. This is, you know, of course, critically important work for the city. I will just echo what a few of my colleagues have said already, that the areas of interest and the tasks that are in front of you are very important. And I would specifically like to call out your work on the housing element. And I would echo what Councilmember Ready mentioned in giving a focus on those lower-income, below-market-rate unit development. So again, just want to thank you for all of your hard work that's going to go into that process. I did have one question about the residential design guidelines. I know I brought that up in a question, and I brought it up because I remember when I was on the planning commission, our conversation and our general thought about how the residential design guidelines would help to clarify or at least provide some precision within the city about residential development. I know that there were several policy-related issues, specifically floor area ratio and a few other policy areas that we, that some folks in the community, some folks in leadership felt were too broad-based, let's call it, and we needed a little bit more of a scalpel to determine what type of design guidelines and what type of architectural requirements would be useful for each individual neighborhood. And I guess I'm just kind of wondering, with that said, and, you know, that premise may have changed in the last year or so, but I would think that it has not. With that said, where do we think we are now with residential development in our community? I mean, I would, again, I would imagine that the same concerns are still on the table and the one solution that we seem to have for it has kind of proven to not be as effective because of the state legal mandates as we would have hoped. And so I guess I'm wondering, where do we go now?
Thank you. So you're right. The state has changed what we are able to do. So the design guidelines are just that. They're guidelines. They're not anything that architecturally that we can enforce. But it's certainly guidelines and it's certainly a tool for staff to use to help people go forward with their projects so that they understand kind of the feeling of the particular neighborhood that they're in. We have some neighborhoods that are very traditional, some that are a little more contemporary. So this is just to help our residents go forward and build something that is compatible. Much, much often the same, creating the same cadence that's on a block. So it's a tool for staff and our public. And I see that Vice Chair Hunter has unmuted himself.
Oh, yeah. I agree completely with that. And I wanted to add that we will learn much more about that tomorrow night when staff presents what the new state law allows and prohibits. But one thing is that my understanding is that what is currently on our books is still there and still applies. So the guiding principles and the findings that need to be made for an architectural permit, because they were in place before the year 2020, I believe that they are, is still on effect. So the only thing that we are prohibited from doing now is to add new subjective guidelines. But as I say, we will learn more details about that tomorrow night. Right. And it looks like Ms. Xline has her hand up. Maybe she will have, she likes to add something?
Great. What Chair Radcliffe and Chair Hunter said is absolutely correct. I just wanted to add that one thing in the staff report that we're proposing is a pilot period to sort of see how this goes and see there are some options. I think you did see before you, you know, quite a full work plan. So I think, you know, we are trying to kind of test this all out. So we're trying to do this during a pilot period and then see how this works and then determine, you know, what does, could this be added into our work program in a different way in the future if it's not working? I think there's some more detail in the staff report, but there are methods to get objective design standards, for example. That's a possibility. I think, you know, there are some things that we could do in the future. I think, you know, that's, those are options on the table. But right now, what we're proposing is a pilot period to see how this works in the form that we have, that we have now.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. I just have one, you know, follow-up comment to that is that, you know, I obviously followed the conversation around floor area ratio very closely. And, you know, one of the subtexts that surfaced, you know, as we discussed that policy measure was that there was one community, specifically one neighborhood, who was really driving the adoption for the entire city for that particular policy. Now, whether or not that policy was appropriate for that particular neighborhood, I'm not going to, you know, opine on that. But what I will say is that I definitely think it had impact on particular areas of the city that was not this one neighborhood, including my own district that is higher density, has smaller lots, and so on and so forth. And so I would, you know, continue to encourage the city staff as well as the planning commission to be thinking about what it means to have a diverse, equitable, and all-inclusive type of land use specifically around residential zoning areas because we want to make sure that we are allowing our residents to make appropriate adjustments to their properties based upon their family situations, where in the city they live, and not based upon the excitement of a particular neighborhood in a city, right? So that's just what I wanted to kind of leave you with and again, encourage us even within the context of the state law that we have to be thinking about that in a critical way. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Aguirre?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the planning commission for this excellent presentation. And a lot of my concerns have been addressed and asked by my colleagues, especially around housing at the lower levels. To me, that's really important. And I want to just say how challenging that I've always felt your job is, that you do so much more of the legwork for us and how much I appreciate it because there's so many things that are coming to the planning commission in so many areas. I'm excited that you've added all of the pieces that are important to us that not only the council's input, the communities as far as housing and equity and social justice. And so I just want to applaud you and thank you for the work that you're doing and let you know that we are there because sometimes I know it's hard and sometimes you have to guess. It's like, are we going in the right direction? Because there's so many things that are happening and they're happening so quick. And I agree with Councilmember Jeff G. I'd love to see all this happen in the next year or so, but we also know that that's not realistic. So that's just my gratitude and a lot of my concerns were addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Aguirre.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask Councilmember Espinoza-Garnica, would you like to weigh in or have your questions all been answered with the presentation?
Yeah, I think all my answers have been, all my questions have been answered. And so I don't have any other follow-up questions. I just share the same, you know, sentiment, the appreciation of the commission for their work. I really appreciate the change in our language already that's occurring. You know, I just think it's going to take more practice and, you know, using this equity lens. And we're going to, I think, with all the input and engagement that we have planned already and all the discussions we've had so far, you know, I think we're on a good path already to start with for our development when it comes to housing. So thank you again for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you all again.
Thank you, Councilmember Espinoza-Garnica. Thank you.
Thank you. And I totally agree with my colleagues that I think that your work plan, as ambitious as it is, I know how hard you work and I know you're going to put every effort into accomplishing whatever you can this coming year and then the years ahead. We'll do what we can to plan forward. I agree with you. I think it's really helpful when we do plan for. We'll do what we can to plan forward. I agree with you. I think it's really helpful when we do plan forward. I was, a lot of my questions were answered. I just wanted to note, recognizing you have an ambitious project, you have a number of projects ahead of you. Those projects are going to impact many different areas of Redwood City and services in Redwood City, and probably overlap into different boards, committees, and commissions. So I know that you plan to interact with the Architecture Advisory, Historic Resources, as well as Housing and Human Concerns. But I want to be sure and, and hope that you will tap into the Transportation Committee, the Arts Commission, and others, so that we are all on the same page. What you do is going to have a ripple effect into all of these boards, committees, and commissions for different reasons. And I want to be sure that they're all aware and up to speed on the work you're doing. So if there's any way that you could, on a regular basis, possibly even come to council or send an email, bringing other boards, committees, and commissions up to speed on where you are, so that they know what's going on, on your agenda, which is probably the most ambitious agenda of all the boards and committees and commissions. So I'm hoping you will. One thing in particular I was thinking of is the Transportation Committee is working with our staff on the study of grade separations. Some of the projects that are being presented are along the transit corridor of Caltrain. Grade separations may have an impact on some of the projects proposed. So there's an area I want to be sure that we're interacting with each other, so that we're not making a decision in one area that will have to be overturned in another. So that was my input. And thank you for focusing on housing. I'm hoping that you will be able to work with our developers to help them understand we do have a true jobs-housing imbalance. We do have a real need for low, very low, and moderate-income housing. And we're hoping that you'll be able to convince them that your vision and our vision should be their vision too. So thank you so much for such a good presentation this evening. We enjoyed seeing you all. And I think at this point, we'd like to have a council action on your plan. So I'd like to ask council if there would be a motion and a second to approve the Planning Commission work plan for fiscal year 2021, '22, and fiscal year '22 through '23. Do I have a motion?
Okay, second, Councilmember Reddy.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Aguirre, seconded by Councilmember Reddy. We'll now have the roll call vote. Ms. Aguilar?
Yes. We will start with Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. Council Espinoza Garnica.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember G.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Reddy.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And also thank you to all the members of the Planning Commission who were here this evening. Thank you for joining us. Now moving on to item 5B, which is our Transportation Advisory Committee work plan for fiscal year 2021, '22, and fiscal year '22, '23. Our transportation manager and Transportation Advisory Committee staff liaison, Jessica Manzi, will introduce the item, and Transportation Advisory Committee Chair LaShonda Kennedy and Vice Chair Kimberly Koch will give a presentation. We'll start with Jessica Manzi.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Howard and members of the city council. As mentioned, I'm Jessica Manzi, Redwood City's Transportation Manager and the staff liaison for the Transportation Advisory Committee. So with that, I'm happy to hand it over to the Chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee, LaShonda Kennedy. And we can advance the slides. There we go. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Jessica. I don't, hopefully, I'm, let's see here. Okay, great. Right, so thank you so much, Mayor Howard, and also to the council. I really, we really appreciate you giving us some time to speak tonight about our plan, and we're really excited to share this with you. Before we get started, we just wanted to pose a couple of questions here to make sure that you're thinking about as we go through this plan, and just making sure that our committee's work is aligned with the strategic priorities of the council. And also, does the city council have other suggestions and recommendations for our committee? So again, thanks for the time, and we will just proceed to the next slide, if that's okay. So as you see on the screen, these are our current members on the top. And we've been working really hard on this plan. We started working on it some months ago. And we reviewed it and discussed it in our March meeting, and then we made some revisions and modifications and approved it in our final June meeting. As you see at the bottom, Rebecca Radcliffe and Monica Calandras were members who participated in this in the past. So we also wanted to make sure we included them on the slide because they participated in the hard work that we did and that we're presenting to you tonight. All right, so next slide. What you're seeing on the screen right now is probably very familiar to you. You know, your strategic priorities, and obviously what jumps out in the green is the goal around transportation, and that's why we're here to talk tonight. But one of the things that jumps out to the screen to me, and also to our committee, is that word equity and having that be the center of all of the work in terms of the strategic plan. And that's something that we've worked really, really hard on here recently in the work that we've been doing. But we also included it in our work plan to make sure that we kept equity at the front of our mind on an ongoing basis in everything that we do. Next slide. And we also wanted to focus on and have an emphasis on equity as it relates to high-needs population. We understand that as a, as a committee or a commission, we represent many of the folks here in our community, within our own committee. Our members represent seniors, parents with school days, children, residents and commuters, and all sorts of folks, including folks who have diverse mobility needs in our community. And so that is really one of the reasons we wanted to make sure that equity was a part of our plan on an ongoing basis. Next slide. You know, when we started, or we formed as a transportation committee, obviously, you know, that was really important for us. And even when we formed originally the pilot of the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, there really hasn't been a difference except for the name change. Our mission has remained the same. And as you can see on the screen, our mission is all about, you know, to increase safe, attractive, comfortable, and independent access and travel for Redwood City community, utilizing the Complete Streets principles and practices. And for those who may not know what that is, it's just, Complete Streets just mean streets designed and operated to enable safe use and support mobility of all users. Next slide. So these are the three focus areas in terms of our activity for the Transportation Advisory Committee. It's really important for us to help to create multimodal transportation options that enable, as I said before, safe, attractive, comfortable, and independent access and travel for pedestrians, cyclists, transit users, and motorists of all ages and all abilities. Secondly, you know, it's critical for us to provide staff with recommendations for pragmatic and specific user solutions. And really something that we are really proud of in terms of our, our committee is to serve as a conduit for community input and to consider these requests and make sure we provide recommendations to the staff. So next slide. So in terms of our goals and priority, you know, we, we just want to make sure that we're here to further the city's progress on local and regional transportation projects. And we're talking again to equitably increase multimodal and accessibility or accessible transportation options and traffic safety for our community members. And so as we go into this work plan and talk about what we're going to do in '21, '22, and '22, '23, that, that is really at the forefront of what we're trying to do and guiding principles for us. So next slide. So quickly, before we jump into our plan, I just want, I don't want to get further down the road without just acknowledging some of the accomplishments that we had on our last work plan. I'm not going to read everything on this list simply because I know we're, we don't have a lot of time tonight. But before we go on to what we hope to do in the future, I just want to acknowledge some of the things that we've done currently or in the past. And so we're really, really proud about all this work that we've put in. And this is just a few of the highlights of some of the things that we've done. But I know as a committee, we're really, really proud, most especially with the work that we did for the Redwood City School District consolidation, supporting all that work and making sure students had safe routes to school. Going to the next slide. And so Vice Chair Koch is going to present the specific projects and talk a little bit about the ongoing priorities that we have. But before she comes on, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of how it's structured. She's going to talk a little bit about the specific projects that we have that you see over in the blue that we're working on. As you see some of the stars there, these are things that are from the last work plan, and we're bringing them back to this, this future work plan. As we talked about, I think, a few minutes ago, we heard a lot of this work is not stuff that can be done in one year or two years. It takes a little bit longer. So we want to make sure we stick with our priorities and move forward with the things that we say are important to us. With the green area, these are ongoing things, are things that we're working on as needed. Obviously, we're consistently reviewing projects and transportation planning and working on community outreach. But as you can see down towards the bottom, the emphasis of equity in high-needs populations. Again, something really important to us. We felt like we wanted to call that out in our work plan and make sure that we put it in the area that's ongoing. So that's really one of the important things that we wanted to make sure we had there. So I'm going to turn over this next section to Vice Chair Koch, and I think, and she's going to just talk specifically really quickly about some of the specific projects and ongoing work that we have been doing and will continue to do.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Howard and council members. I'm just going to take a moment, not that short of a moment, but a little bit of time just to go ahead and give you a brief overview of our project-specific goals that Chair Kennedy just had spoken about. Starting with our Vera Avenue Bike Boulevard. What we've been doing as a committee is we've been helping staff with the Vera Bike Boulevard implementation, evaluation, and community outreach of this project. Over the next few months, we will continue to do that work. And for those of you that don't know, Vera Bike Boulevard is an east-west bike corridor that will connect Alameda de las Pogas to El Camino Real and ultimately to downtown. The project is supplementing the, sorry, traffic calming implementations that are planned for the Senior Center YMCA project, which is in Red Morton Park, as we know. Some aspects of the Vera Bike Boulevard, such as the roundabout at Vera and Valoda, is also included, but that's sort of encompassed in the YMCA and Senior Center project. Vera Bike Boulevard is a quick-build project with a goal to do an evaluation and modifications if needed based on community, community input a few months after the project is actually implemented and projected, the projected construction will be starting this September. Next slide, please. Vision Zero. Vision Zero is something that, a little bit near and dear to my heart. I know LaShonda and I have been sort of on this. Hopefully, we'll be able to continue that. Our goal as an entire committee is to assist with the monitoring and reporting of Vision Zero goals and to help develop, develop with the staff, Zero, Vision Zero Action Plan over the next few months. Currently, staff is working with a group of consultants to develop the first citywide bike and pedestrian master plan and Vision Zero Action Plan branded as RWC Walk Bike Thrive. TAC members will assist staff with project outreach. Tax involvement towards Vision Zero goals include providing input on safety, safety projects, engineering, and design, educational and encouragement programs, and some potential enforcement strategies. TAC will also be involved in the Vision Zero Task Force and Vision Zero Coalition once they are established. Next slide, please. New and emerging transportation options, slow streets. The next step for slow streets, slow streets is to recommend the program and downtown street closures. Should they continue? Should they not? We're going to help staff evaluate the post-COVID and next-step recommendations for the slow streets to understand what's most appropriate and what is requested action from the local communities for each slow street in each neighborhood. Could some of them transition to traffic calming or be part of a bicycle boulevard project? Next slide, please. New and emerging transportation options, shared microability. Work with staff to launch potential shared microability programs, which would be bikes or scooters, program in the city. We need city council to review and approve a new proposed ordinance of shared microability operation. The proposed ordinance and administrative regulations of shared microability in the city will be presented by the end of the year. After city council approves the new ordinance and regulations, TAC will work with the staff to launch the program, depending on if we have potential vendors and who those vendors of interest might be, and to launch the services within Redwood City. Next slide, please. Ongoing goals, as an example, community liaisons. Assign members to be liaisons with, with regional committees and working groups. Currently, TAC members do attend various regional working groups, project-specific meetings, and we do report back at each one of our meetings, whether, as you see here, whether it be Sam Trans, Reimagine Sam Trans, Redwood City Together, CalMod, groups of that nature. Next slide, please. We provide input on major transportation planning projects such as RWC Walk Bike Thrive and transportation components of major development projects that incorporate traffic calming and transportation improvements at nearby intersections and roadways. For example, Sequoia Station, Transit District, South Main Mixed Juice Project, and the Gatekeeper Projects. On a case-by-case basis, planning staff brings these development projects to TAC for their input on internal, if they're internal or adjacent or off-site. Yet, they bring them to the TAC committee for proposed improvements if they're part of the project. And last slide, please. Ongoing examples, community outreach. Last one, I'll just jump in there. Community outreach and education. Provide educational opportunities for the community and the committee. The past, we've had an educational video about the HAWK signal. There was a small, short video that was made about that, how to use a HAWK signal, what it is, whether you are a pedestrian, a cyclist, or a driver, or a parent of a school student. So we're trying to reach out and to get more community involvement with all things transportation and mobility-wise within the city to keep all of us as mobile and as safe as possible. And with that, I will pass it back to Chair Kennedy for questions and discussion.
So this, this is our presentation, and this is our plan. And hopefully, it's something that you find does align well with the strategic priorities of the city. But we would love to hear your thoughts on this and also to hear any suggestions or recommendations you may have for our committee.
Thank you very much, Chair Kennedy and Vice Chair Koch and city staff. Jessica, thank you so much for being here. I know that everyone on that committee must enjoy working with you. It's at least what I hear. So I thank you so much for coming this evening. I wanted to know right now if council has any clarifying questions before we open it up for public comment. Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk so she can do public comment. Ms. Aguilar?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for public comment on item 5B. That is the Transportation Advisory Committee work plan. And if you'd like to make public comment, please see the instructions on the screen. Raise your hand now and keep your hand raised so that we could see how many speakers we have. If you're joining by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Another few seconds, just in case. All right, Mayor Howard, there are no hands raised for public comment at this time, so I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. So now we'll move on to council questions and discussion. Who would like to begin? Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. So now we'll move on to council questions and discussion. Who would like to begin? Council member. We'll start with council member Ready.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Chair Kennedy and Vice Chair Cook. What an excellent presentation and and a great work plan for your Transportation Committee. I I get comments from seniors, why are we not as important, you know, to the city when the City Council has its strategic priorities and seniors are definitely not in it. So again, I apologize to our public. I'm going to refer to the staff report that was given to us. And so and applaud you for specifically listing seniors in your high-needs populations. Because I'm going, I'm now able to point to that when I'm, you know, talking to seniors who feel that they are not as important to our various committees, including transportation, that is focused on pedestrians and and bikes and multimodal and and walkers aren't mentioned or, you know, cabs aren't mentioned or whatever. So thank you. Again, I thank you for calling out specifically including seniors as one of the high-needs populations. And I look forward to hearing any recommendations you might have in the future that address perhaps what other cities might be doing in some unique kinds of ways supporting the transportation needs of seniors, especially low-income seniors. So just to put that little B in your bonnet so that I can do my part and and make sure that they were included in this conversation. But in any case, thank you so much to you and your committee for this excellent work and for the excellent work that's in front of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Ready. Council Member Aguirre?
Thank you, Mayor, and then thank you to the committee. Transportation is near and dear to me as having worked as a commissioner myself for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and looking at all aspects of what we're doing at a local level. That is probably where it all starts. I want to focus again on Vision Zero. We spent a lot of time on that as a council and to me, it's one of the largest equity issues that we have. And I'm glad that Council Member Ready brought up seniors. And, you know, we have children and people that are avid cyclists and they all have the same needs of moving from one place to the other. And, you know, it's interesting how many seniors are cyclists too. I mean, I've run into quite a few, and so how do we make it safe for them? And the other day, there was a thread on one of our next doors on how important it is to follow the rules and and the sites that were there were pretty savvy and I'm glad to see that people in our community really believe in following the rules and making our city safer. But I'd like to see us move in that area, especially in the Vision Zero because I think that I'd like us to be known as one of the safest cities for cyclists at all levels and especially the children that are vulnerable, that are now, you know, going back to school, that it makes it easier for them to move back and forth and how we can make streets safer for them and what can we do to really educate them? You know, it starts from, you know, the safe routes to schools. There's so many other things that we can do to continue to do that. And also the folks that don't have a car and that really need to move that are low-income to their jobs. You know, some of the day laborers, some of the folks that we know that aren't getting the information, the support. Some of those things. So that's one of my focus areas. So yes, I think that you're following our strategic goals. Some of my suggestions would be to make sure that we're looking at those recommendations for Vision Zero cyclists as they move through our city and to have it as an outreach in all languages and for all levels of folks, whether they're seniors, children, avid bikers, families, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Member Aguirre. Council Member Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to, of course, thank Chair Kennedy and Vice Chair Koch. Really, really excellent presentation. I'm impressed by all of the work streams that you all are taking on. It's quite a bit on your plate, but I know that you all are up to the challenge. So I really look forward to seeing how things pan out. I'm particularly excited and interested in Vision Zero for sure, exactly for the reason that Council Member Aguirre had mentioned. And so I would just, you know, encourage you in that work. And please, please let the council know if there's anything that we can do to assist you as thinking forward. I know that it will be a lot of coordination among various stakeholder groups. That's not always easy. But again, I have no doubt that you'll be able to do it with a lot of energy and a lot of success ultimately. I did have one question, kind of going down that line of reasoning. I know that you all mentioned that you are on various regional committees. And I think that's fantastic. I'm just kind of wondering, is there anything that the council can do? We, all of us actually have regional appointments to committees, including some that are transportation-oriented, to further the agenda that you you know, think would kind of create more value for Redwood City?
Well, I'll just say, based on the first presentation that that was done, it sounds like, and thank you for asking the question, Council Member Smith. They talked a little bit about there being some synergy between the Planning Commission as well as the council. And so I think from our perspective, the more we hear from the council regarding things that you need and in ways that we can actually also help too, I think that will be beneficial to our committee. So ways in which you know, that we can work together, I think is really important and it doesn't necessarily need to be, you know, yearly meeting or, you know, meetings here and there, but definitely that open channel of communication because, you know, many of our committee members are actually visiting or either liaisoning to regional groups as well as internally here in the city. I know, I believe Member Koch actually works with the senior group. So we, as much as we can collaborate, we definitely would love to do that.
Thank you so much for that.
If I can just, I just wanted to say thank you, Council Member Smith, for pointing that out. It don't work specifically with the senior group. We do have one of our committee members that does. And just so the council is aware that in addition to participating and attending the regional meetings, all of our committee members are also assigned to the liaisons for our local city, other city boards, commissions. And so they do attend. We have one that does attend Senior Affairs Commission meetings. I myself go to or attend as often as I can, Parks, Wrecks and Community Service. And right now, that's especially important with the with the groundbreaking of the new Senior Center and the YMCA, and they've been to TAC a couple of times, actually. And sort of just to continue for us to sort of not wait for the other entities to have to come to us, but for us to be able to have that opportunity to continue to reach out and to sort of see what is going on and and bring that back to ourselves and sort of see how we can maybe just stay in the loop or maybe get a little bit of a step ahead if possible. And then, you know, report back to one another and let Jessica know sort of what's going on and do our best, do our best to sort of keep our ear to the ground and see what else is going on in the city and other reach out and maybe invite them to come to one of our meetings if that's something that they might be struggling with. Maybe not aware that they can do that. So we're also on top of that as much as we can be.
Fantastic. Yeah, I know second to both what you Chair Kennedy and Vice Chair Koch have as mentioned. I currently sit on the Regional Committee of Commute.org. And I think that would be great to just have a moment or a channel to get some insights that I've learned from that regional committee. And I'm sure that several of my colleagues feel the same way. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Member Smith. Council Member Espinoza Garnica?
Yeah, I just wanted to share words of appreciation. Thank you for the presentation. I especially wanted to point out what I most, one of the things I'm, one of the things, you know, because there's plenty of things on the items here that you know, are worthy to be excited about. The Vision Zero feels like a major accomplishment for the city to have forward. So I really appreciate the work that's been done on previous councils and the previous members on the Committee for Transportation on making this initiative, especially learning how in Redwood City, folks in my district and in Michael's district, you know, we see in areas that are low-income and we have high, high traffic collisions and especially for people of color. So it's something that feels very personal to me. And I really appreciate the work that's being done to get started on this and, you know, and trying to follow an equity perspective and all of this. So we don't have just neighbors who are the loudest rallying for for change in their neighborhoods. We start to distribute it proportionally throughout the community based on height needs. So I'm really appreciative of all the work that is being done to include those who've been marginalized, most marginalized, as mentioned, by many of my council members, fellow council members like Council Member Ready, including those our seniors, those of different abilities and, you know, I appreciate the work that's been done and we're continuing to do. I'm really excited about the Boulevard and you know, the Bike Boulevard and just ways that we can make it safer and prioritizing less on cars, but like public transportation and, you know, cleaner, safer passages for pedestrians and such. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Council Member. Vice Mayor Hale?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for your excellent comments. Gosh, there's so, so much to just echo and then just so many heartfelt thanks to offer you all. Chair Kennedy, Vice Chair Koch, and to the entire commission, many of whom I've known for years and I've seen your silent and dedicated work to transportation in our city. And I hope you feel immensely proud of that work. I truly believe this is work that has long-term impacts on the quality of life of our residents. I wanted to ask a question about one of the projects and then offer a couple of comments. For Ms. Manzi, I believe I saw some work, it looked like, happening on Vera. Is that related to this Vera Avenue Bicycle Project or is that another project that just happened to be on Vera? And it looked like some crosswalk work near the schools.
Yes, that is part of the Vera Bike Boulevard project. It's a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at Vera and Hudson. So that was one of the locations that have been highlighted as a particular priority of the project. And because of COVID-related delays with the overall Bike Boulevard project, we decided to sort of separate that piece out because of the priority it had and to do that first. So that's why you're seeing that now and we're getting ready to award the the construction contract for the rest of the work.
Wow, that is, that's really fantastic. That happens to be in the space that I take my daughter to school and I have to admit that I, we were biking every day and I gave up on it because it felt truly unsafe to be doing. And I think for a member of council to be saying that, you know, it shows how much work we have left to do in this space. So I I really appreciate it. I saw what was going in. It looks fantastic and I look forward to using it and giving the bike another try. And that leads to my comment, which is is going to be around Vision Zero. And I'm going to make this comment because I know that the staff takes direction by hearing from a bulk of the council. And so now you've heard from at least three members. Maybe I'm the fourth or the fifth, but I can't underscore why, sorry, my daughter just busted in here. I can't underscore why this is so important. And to me, it is really, it is about equity. Why is it that children in Menlo Park and in Palo Alto get to bike and walk to school? And many of our children don't get to enjoy that same benefit. Biking and walking to school has long-term, like lifelong impacts to health and wellness. And that all starts here in a childhood. And that is something that we as adults can give the children of Redwood City that will stick with them their entire lives. So I see it as incredibly important that we look out for their health and their well-being and their safety. And I loved the remark one of my council members, colleagues made about how often what helps children also helps seniors. It helps all of us. We have been through such a trying time for health. And so everything we can do to return the health and vibrancy of our community, we should be doing. And I think that this is, I realize that it is an incredibly ambitious policy, but this is the team to help us come up with these ideas. And I really believe in all of you and the work that you're doing. And so thank you so much. This policy is incredibly important to me and I know to so many members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Council Member G?
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and I'm going to not turn on video and hopefully not get kicked out this time. So I'll see what I can do. Chair Kennedy, Vice Chair Koch, thank you and the members for all of your hard work. There is a tremendous amount of work going on in the transportation arena today. And it's just unending. I mean, there's just very difficult to be able to say, where do I stop? Because there's so much to do. Now, my conversations with the city manager this morning, you know, I will challenge the group a little bit. Knowing where the committee started, it started as the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. When it was started as a pilot committee. And now it's the Transportation Advisory Committee. And in one of your earlier slides, not only are you focused on transportation, mobility, and safety within the city of Redwood City, but there's a sentence about regional connections also. And you know, and the work and Council Member Smith alluded to, all of us serve on regional committees. And there's just a lot of work going on right now. I think Mayor Howard mentioned in her comments to the Planet Commission, the grade separation work that is being done and how that may affect or provide opportunities for safety and better bikeways and pedestrian ways. The Caltrain Board last year approved a quarter-wide grade separation study that will get started in the next couple of months. I'm pushing to get it started sooner. But something got in the way between last year and this year caught COVID. That's why they're starting this year instead of last year. We have the Dumbarton Rail coming to Sam Trans at some point. Something that I started back in 2017 is potentially coming to fruition. Maybe in August or September at Sam Trans is where we are looking at discounting the Way to Go Pass. The Way to Go Pass is an annual bus pass for Sam Trans for our affordable housing communities, our small businesses. Where it was $120 a year per resident with a minimum. We're looking to reduce that to $40 a year and a lower minimum. These are game changers from my perspective in our community as well as for all of our communities. And so that's why I would challenge this committee to kind of really tweak its mission statement from where it started as the Complete Streets Advisory Committee and to embrace the more regional aspects and the connections with that also. Because it could be a huge difference. And Mayor Howard, I do have a comment at the end of our presentations because I think by the time we're done, all four committees will mention housing and transportation. We're halfway done and both committees have said housing and transportation. I believe it's in the work plans for the other two we're going to hear from. And how do we make all of us, the council, the council ad hoc committees, standing committees, and our boards and commissions on some of these issues, like the Way to Go Pass, where does that wind up? What's the most appropriate committee for that? Is that Housing and Human Concerns? Is it Transportation? Is it a council ad hoc? Is it the council? And how do they all fit together? So that we can have a voice that says yes or no, depending on the issue, and how it can make our community better. So I would I think we need to put some brain power to see, how do we take all this collective brain power and make it work effectively, efficiently, and get what's best for Redwood City? But Chair Kennedy and Vice Chair Koch and to our staff and to the other commissioners, thank you for all the hard work. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Council Member G. And I totally agree with your statements and I believe a study session may be in our future where we bring everybody together and say, what are some of the outstanding things we need to work together on and who'd like to take the lead? I think that would be a really interesting study session to have all of us there sitting at the table together. Hopefully, it will be in the near future. So I wanted to thank every council member for your comments because I So I wanted to thank every council member for your comments because I totally agree. Um, Ms. Manzi, Chair Kennedy, Vice Chair Coke, all of the members of the tra- Transportation Committee. Just to think, wasn't that long ago, we didn't even have a Complete Streets Committee. And what were we thinking? We should have been doing this a long time ago. I am so proud of all of you and where you've come and how aggressive you have been in accepting the challenges of this community. We're bigger than Palo Alto. We're bigger than Menlo Park. We are so spread out. The challenge for us is to help people get around our community safely, recognizing we have a lot of geography to cover. So I I really appreciate the efforts you're putting into that. Also want to thank you for particular attention you're paying to our most vulnerable, those people who are disabled, our children, our seniors. I really, really appreciate that because I definitely believe by aiding and and finding solutions to our most vulnerable groups, it benefits each and every one of us. We'll all be able to exercise in a healthy way. We'll all be able to get to and from our destinations in a safer way. So thank you. I really appreciate what you're doing. And I can't thank you enough for going to different boards, committees, and commissions meetings, even if it's occasionally, just to che- you know, check in and see what they're doing so that you can also share what you're doing. Uh, I mentioned the Planning Commission, but I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention the Port Commission. Just check in with them because they're aggressively working on bringing ferry service to Redwood City, and they're going to have to deal with how to get people, once they get off that ferry, in and around Redwood City. How do we do it seamlessly and safely? So that that's another group that you might want to just check in with. But thank you so very much. And I really appreciate my colleagues' comments because they're, it's a well-deserved kudos to all of you for the hard work that you're doing. So now I'd like to, very much like to ask for a vote, um, a, a motion and a second to approve this ambitious work plan of the transmission, uh, Transportation Committee for 2021, '22, and fiscal year 22, '23. Do I have a motion?
Go move, Smith. Second, G.
Councilmember Smith made the motion with Councilmember G seconding the motion. I'll turn it over to our city clerk for the roll call.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilmember Espino Segarnica.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, all the members of the Transportation Committee for being here this evening. And I hope you'll stay and listen to the other two groups that are here. Thank you. Moving on to item 5C, the Housing and Human Concerns Committee Work Plan for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Our Housing Leadership Manager and Housing and Human Concerns Committee Staff Liaison, Allyn Lancaster, will introduce the item. And Committee Chair Margaret Becker and Vice Chair Kate Adams, hi, um, excuse me, Kate Adams Heister will give a presentation. We'll start with Allyn Lancaster.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Howard and City Councilmembers. Um, Allyn Lancaster, the Housing Leadership Manager and the um staff liaison to the Housing and Human Concerns Committee. Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. Um, I want to introduce our HHCC members that are here. Uh, we have Chair Margaret Becker and Vice Chair Kate Heister. Um, we also have member Elon Cheiman um joining the meeting as well. Um, also in the committee, we have Ray Brown, Jerome Madigan, Alma Montalvo, and Angela Piazza. And now I'd like to turn it over to Chair Becker to continue the presentation.
Ms. Lancaster, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone's can can hear me. Um, start just by uh going over for members of um City Council and the public uh what the HHCC mission statement is. HHCC advocates for the improvement of the quality of life of residents of Redwood City to assure that human considerations and housing needs as set forth in the general plan are given adequate consideration in the decision-making process. So um, next slide, please. I'm gonna, this presentation actually has two parts. I'm gonna start by going over uh our work plan that was begun in 2018 through uh 2020. Um, and you'll see here that that work plan had five main uh objectives. I'm actually going to go through the first four very quickly. Um, Consolidated Plan Activities, Human Services, Financial Assistance Endowment Fund, Basic Human Needs, um, work on HHCC functioning. Um, it turned out that about ninety percent of the work that we've done over the past three years or so has really focused on item number five, which is uh developing housing strategies to increase affordable housing and reduce displacement. And the reason, the main reason that this ended up being our main focus was at the direction of council. We received um input, um, council really wanted HHCC to focus on innovative, creative ways to um increase housing and preserve affordable housing. Next slide, please. So again, going through the first four items that um that were on our our previous work plan. Um, Consolidated Plan Activities, as most of you on council know, consist of making records to council for um the Community Development Grant, CDBG, um, home investment, um, investments and and uh HSFA funding. And we have um funded, uh made um recommendations to council for that, those funds in 2018, 19, 20, and 21. Um, the HSFA funding um for uh 2021 is expected to, um, were respected mentions um at our July meeting. And this um, this goal is um continues yearly. Next slide, please. Next, uh, uh, City Council had charged um HHCC with trying to figure out how to start a Human Services Financial Assistance Endowment Fund. And um we did a lot of research into possible funding mechanisms. And actually, um, uh, it was deemed not financially advisable, so this work was discontinued. And um we'd be happy to answer questions about that um after the presentation. Next slide, please. Basic Human Needs, we, we have um attended Human Services interagency meetings. We've made site visits to all of the community organizations that we recommend funding for. And um this, this work is continued in our our upcoming work plan. Next slide. So thi- this, this particular goal of our last work plan was less about specific goals and outcomes and more about um how we function as a committee. Um, with everything going on with housing and human services in our area, we just thought that there, there must be ways that we could partner with citizens in our area to um to improve our outcomes. And it, we ended up being quite successful, as you'll see um further in this presentation. We partnered with Stanford University. We uh worked with the Planning Commission on Missing Middle Housing, and we worked with Home For All and stuff to conduct a property owner forum where we discussed with um owners of naturally occurring low-income uh housing, uh ways to serve that housing. Next slide. Okay, so now we get to the meat of what we've accomplished over the past three years. Um, and there are many slides on this, so I'll try to go as fast as I can. Um, we really took a deep dive into researching housing strategy and inner housing strategies. Um, I, I, I think you'd be surprised at how much research we, how many site visits we made to things like uh producers of modular. Um, but basically, the first thing we accomplished was we, we looked into methods to produce more affordable housing. We recommended an inclusionary zoning policy that uh that was um adopted by council in 2018. We invited developers to discuss what they would need if they were to create and re- redevelop more affordable housing. And this, um, this work is continued into our um upcoming work plan proposal. Next. Um, Displacement Prevention and Exploration of Rental Protections. We researched and recommended minimum lease terms and relocation assistance ordinance that was adopted by council and went into effect in January of 2019. Our initial goal was completed, but as you'll see in our work plan for the coming years, um, it will be continued um uh to to assess this work and potentially look into um further displacement prevention strategies. Next slide. Um, Shared Housing and Workforce Housing. We made a, a, a pretty lengthy presentation to the city's school district board to investigate possibilities to look at teacher housing. We met with Sequoia Union High School District, the Police Department, Kaiser Premonente Hip Housing. We developed a workforce housing survey that all of those stakeholders were, um, had bought into. And in the end, we, we decided that we were not going to continue this work. It just didn't seem to be um an area where in our role on HHCC, we could continue it. Um, but I do believe that, that the Redwood City School District has made some headway in looking at workforce housing for teachers. Um, so hopefully our work did have some outcome. Next slide. Uh, Small Homes, Moderate Income. Um, we drafted a white paper with recommendation for missing middle. We worked with staff to research this, look at what communities all around the country were doing, and um conducted a joint study session with the Planning Commission on Missing Middle. Um, I think some of you in City Council are here with this work that we've, that we've um, what we've accomplished in this area, and we will be continuing it in 2021 to 2023. Um, we also did um a ton of research on naturally occurring affordable housing units. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we partnered with um the um Home For All and PCRC to and and city staff to conduct a property owner forum in June of 2019 to discuss what property owners would need to maintain affordable units. Um, the key learnings from that session went into Partnership for the Bay's Future Challenge Grant application and award that is currently funding a fellow um uh on city staff uh case for preserving affordable housing units. So we will be continuing this work, working with city staff um in our next work plan. Identifying um and preserving and acquiring affordable units. Um, we reached out to Stanford University and had a very positive response from the Sustainable Urban Systems Program, the Department of Public Policy. We worked with um professors and uh students, graduate students and undergraduate students to look at GIS systems for a more robust analysis of land use. Uh, we did in-depth analysis of potential policy solutions. And this is another area where our work helped lead the city to receiving the Partnership for the Bay's Future Challenge Grant, and so that we can continue this work and move it forward. Um, hopefully, in our um, in our next, um, next slide. I'm almost done with housing strategies. We also looked at um innovative land use and funding. Um, one of our members developed um an extensive white paper on parking for for downtown Redwood City. We reviewed extensive GI data for open parcels and met with key stakeholders to discuss innovative funding and developed many financial models for potential acquisition and management of affordable units. Um, although we didn't make any policy recommendations to City Council, um, much of this work, again, is being um um recommended to move forward um in our upcoming work plan. Next slide. And um lastly, an issue that I think many on City Council are very familiar with, vehicular housing, safe parking. We um sort of laid the groundwork to move this work forward. We researched safe parking models and best practices, um, conducted outreach, met with um Project We Hope Life Moves homeless outreach team, um, and advocated for a safe parking program. And um eventually ended up forming a special ad hoc committee with City Council members. And um the Safe Parking Program Ordinance was uh approved on August 24, 2020. So the program is fully operational, and we um receive regular updates on the program, both from city staff and from Project Life, Life Moves. Next slide. So moving on to part two, um, I've completed my assess, my analysis of what we've accomplished over the past three or so years. And um for our proposed work plan for 2021 to 2023, we uh, we have five main guiding principles. One is um effective use of data. Um, also, um, making sure that racial equity is a part of all of our work, making sure that we are um engaging the community, that uh we're looking not just at um the ideas, but um how um I, how policies can be implemented and um also at um accessibility. Um, our work plan aligns with the City Council's strategic plan. Um, the part of the strategic plan specifically that um is to meet our unique community housing needs for people of all income levels. Uh, preserving existing affordable house, protecting housing options for low and middle-income residents, producing housing to meet our RENA goals for moderate, low, and very low-income residents, and potentially, who knows, in the future, extremely low. And uh also partnering on housing uh opportunities for unique populations. Next slide. So a, as in every year past, uh, we will um help the cities um CDBG and home annual and consolidated plan and make funding recommendations um for CDBG home and HSFA. That is a yearly um task for HHCC. Since passing the re- since um council passed the Relocation Assistance Ordinance and Minimum Lease Terms, um, we, sometime has passed, and we've, we have heard that it is uh appropriate at this point to study and guide um the implementation assessment and um actually some enhancements or um changes for these uh tenant protection ordinances. And this is something that the fellow um from the Partnership for the Bay's Future Challenge Grant and city staff will be working on, and we have an ad hoc committee specifically dedicated to work. Um, as a, as a committee, we're very, very dedicated to the idea of preserving affordable housing. Um, so number three on our proposed work plan is to research and propose policies for the preservation of UAH unsupervised affordable housing. And um this again is another um goal that the um uh is being funded from the grant from the Partnership for the Bay's Future. Um, the goal is to preserve existing UAH units, convert units to deed-restricted affordable units, and pervert the ci- um, sorry, preserve the city's existing mobile home units. And we have an ad hoc committee specifically working on um mobile home um preservation. As always, uh, and it is part of our mission statement, we always have an eye to basic human needs, to monitor the needs and gap, provide support to organizations um in our, in our area, um, to monitor COVID-19 impacts and to participate in quarterly interagency meetings. And this is something that um with the um extremely competent um work and guidance from city staff, we um monitor and um sometimes things do bubble up for us to um to work, work on. And lastly, our last goal for our proposed 2021, 2023 work plan is um affordable housing production. Um, I don't need to say anything to anyone on City Council, I'm sure, about um arena numbers and uh specifically um our um gap in the um moderate income area of of housing. So we intend to explore and advance policy recommendations and methods to produce more affordable housing in on all the different um categories. Um, and mo- most specifically by contributing to the housing element update um with um city staff. Um, we will continue to explore missing middle housing policies and develop possi- Um we will continue to explore missing middle housing policies and develop poss- policy recommendations that support moderate income housing and develop develop recommendations that support and expand accessible housing. So um at this time, I guess uh it we can open it up to questions, um answers. And thank you for for your time, Mayor Howard and um and counsel.
Thank you so much, Chair Becker and Vice Chair Heester. And thank you, Ms Lancaster. That was a very good presentation. What an ambitious work plan you have set out for yourselves. Um now I'd like to ask if any, if there's any clarifying questions from council before we go to public comment. Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over now to our city clerk for public comment. Ms Agalar?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for public comment on item five C, the Housing and Human Concerns Committee Work Plan. Um if you would like to make public comment, the instructions are on the screen, please raise your hand and keep it raised so we can see how many speakers we have. If you have called in, please press star nine in order to raise your hand. We'll give it a minute. We have three speakers so far. Okay, so we have three speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. I will call your names. Um in the order that your hands are raised, and the timer will begin when you start speaking. Our three speakers are Iban, Iban, I'm sorry if I was pronouncing that, um followed by Pat WH three, and then our last speaker will be Allison M. So we'll start with Iban, and please let me know how to pronounce that. Um go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, um my name is Ivan.
Oh, Ivan, thank you.
A very recent uh resident. I just moved in yesterday from Palo Alto, and I wanted to let council and committee know how thrilled I am to see the quality of work being put out by uh by both of you, the ambition that you have um with uh to respect tackling all of these many problems that we are are facing, and uh just the the staggering difference between uh what I've seen so far in in a very short amount of time in uh in the city council and uh the one in Palo Alto. Um as opposed to fighting arena numbers, you are choosing to align with them. Um the production of affordable dense uh housing is obviously paramount in California in the Bay of all places. I would very strongly recommend council to approve the motion. Um I think this is a good baseline. Uh it's incredibly aggressive, but you know, any extra bit helps. Um I also wanted to speak to the transportation for a second because I logged on a little late, but um obviously Vision Zero is a critically important for the the health of the city, and um I think it's a it's a great way to go. Um you know, many, many problems that transportation faces um is because of the car-centric designs of cities. So um you know, very clearly, I think, moving towards pedestrian and bike-friendly um uh traffic ways would be a good idea. Um but yeah, thank you all for your time, and uh have a good night.
Thank you, Ivan, and welcome to Redwood City. Our next speaker is Pat WH three, and Pat will be followed by Allison M.
Thank you, HHCC members. I appreciate the uh document that you showed, especially the one of uh the Venn diagrams where it referred to racial equity. Racial equity for me is a literal term when it comes to housing. Uh due to the city's history, uh there have been very few opportunities for people of color to increase their own financial equity. No amount of high education and good-paying jobs will ever make up for the equity that the majority population has handed down from father to son to daughter to grandchild uh due to their ability to buy homes in the nineteen fifties. I want to say that I'm particularly excited about the uh Community Land Trust investigation, research opportunity, because from my perspective, this is the only way that minorities, ethnic minorities and people of modest to low incomes will ever get on that American dream of homeownership. And uh and to develop the family equity the way it's been done for some folks in the past. Uh I understand there's deed restrictions, but I would urge you to look at deed restrictions which provide some ownership equity for the residents, the buyers. Unfortunately, whenever I hear affordable housing, I'm thinking of affordable rent. But for me, affordable housing is houses that can afford to be purchased and equity accruing from the increasing value they're from. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Our next speaker is Allison M.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. I have a little different perspective than the first speaker, and there's been a lot of commentary on this. If you Google and do the research is that the RHNA numbers probably are high in the long run, and I'm not saying that the city should appeal or sue. Um some Orange County cities and Los Altos are taking that approach, not to fight, but to appeal and to have a logical, a logical basis for doing so. And um you know, that is not something the the need to provide housing at every level, at every level, is what the law is. And I do recognize that we're having a moderate crunch right now, and I've been around for the last twenty years, seeing all of these luxury high-end uh high-density developments go go in, and having the term pencil out, max DU thrown around with no affordable housing east of one oh one, nothing, eh eh save maybe Redwood Chores, but in Redwood City, Maine, down here off Whipple, everything is high-end, high density, very expensive. And sometimes there's even um a promise to make them condos, and then they flip to apartments, which is what happened down at the former um Pete's Harbor. So there is some ownership over here, um but there's a lot of apartments as well. And who knows if the Strad is going to be built. Everyone knows I'm not opposed to that. But I also would like to see very aggressive and flexible and visionary um thought about very low and extremely low income. And I do really appreciate Diana Ready always um adding that because there's extremely low, very low and low and moderate, and all of those have been overlooked, and these are people that can't work in Redwood City. I support the land trust, tiny homes, safe RVs, and more of it, and also live aboard everywhere they're allowed.
Thank you, Allison. That concludes a public comment on this portion.
Thank you, Ms Agalar. Now we will have council discussion. And uh who would like to begin? Council member ready?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. I guess that's my job tonight. So um thank you, Mayor. Um thank you, um Chair Becker and Vice Chair Heester. As a former HACC member, um many of you know how close to my heart you all are, and how much, how very much I appreciate the um not only the work that you do, but the enthusiasm with which you do it. Um surveying um community members to check in with them to find out how they're doing, um being the heart behind the Safe Parking Program, you know, oh, I'm gonna make myself cry, so I'm not gonna talk about that anymore. Um so in I have, I have been using examples from the the um staff reports, and this is no exception. But this is something, rather than apologizing to the public, I want to highlight this because I was really excited about this piece um on your staff report. It's under step step two, and it and it's saying um under develop or review a mission statement that reflects that purpose, there's a little subtext that says who we are, what we do, who we do it for, and why we do it. I love that. And I'm thinking, as a city council member, I I'm going to just have that type tattooed on my arm or something. I mean, that's that's just, that's just a wonderful, I just love that so much. And uh okay, well, maybe I'll put it on a pillow. Um but um Chair Becker did read my mind. Um whenever we mention all income levels, please specifically call out very low and extremely low income levels. Because we cannot ever be thinking about all income levels unless we are willing to go deep, and we're truly intentional about um offering housing for the for the most vulnerable among us. Uh but other than that, HHCC members, you rock, and I'm just so proud of you all. And thank you all for the hard work and for this uh amazing work plan. Um I I just can't thank you enough. Um thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, council member ready. I like that. Um who would like to be next? Council member G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, Chair Becker, Vice Chair Heester. Thank you, and and the entire committee for a tremendous body of work and a very um significant and substantial work plan for the next couple of years, and the need is there in our community and in the region. I I was curious, there at least with this current administration, there's a tremendous legislative effort in Washington DC, and there's a tremendous effort in Sacramento, and one could argue different spectrums of it. But whatever happens in Congress, whatever happens in Sacramento does have an impact on housing at the local level. And so I was curious about the pipeline of information to the committee from DC or from Sacramento. Are you getting timely information on laws and bills and advocacy one way or the other, so that you can weigh in or ask council to weigh in in a timely way? Or would it help your work if we could improve that pipeline?
Um, do you want to take this one, or do you want me to take this?
Go ahead, Kate.
Okay. Um I would say so, so it would definitely help uh for us to have more. I think we we definitely try to track things ourselves. Um also, I will say, city staff definitely kind of goes above and beyond to try to keep us up to date as well, um and regularly reports back on things that are happening um with Redwood City's lobbyists and, you know, those pieces helping us understand that. So big shout out to to city staff um for for helping us with that. But certainly, if there is more support, things, you know, things come through very quickly. Um and um yeah, if there's if there's more opportunity for us to be um on top of that information, certainly, I think that that supports the work.
Great. I mean, to our city manager and to staff, to the extent we can help this pipeline, I think it could be great, because one of the things you know, when we talk about creating housing or advocacy, there is um a challenge, as this committee knows and council knows, is that the low-income tax credits um are very scarce these days. And the Bay Area communities did not fare very well in this last go-around in terms of being awarded the low-income housing tax credits. So there is a Senate bill bipartisan, actually, of all things, that word B word bipartisan effort in Washington that Senate Bill eleven thirty-six and HR um twenty-five seventy-three. It's called the Affordable Housing Credit Improvement Act of two thousand twenty-one. And what it's proposing is to double the number and amount of low-income housing tax credits available. And that pipeline of information to the council, to HHCC, and to the community at large could be very helpful in terms of if we want to support it and advocate for its passage, to be able to get more to increase the pipeline of tax credits, because it's very key, whether you're a for-profit or a nonprofit affordable housing developer, these tax credits are extremely important to make the math work. And um again, that's why I asked the question is how well are we positioned to receive the information and to get it in a timely way so we can do something. So hopefully, we can can figure that one out. But thank you for all the effort, tremendous body of work, and a tremendous work plan. Um much needed, and thank you to everybody for all the hard work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member G. Council member Aguirre?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the committee for the work that you do. Uh the work that all of our committees and commissions and boards do is is so important, but the first word that comes to my mind when I listen to your report was noble. I mean, the it's it's everything that you're doing is so important for, again, the most vulnerable and for the biggest need. And I want to welcome the Palo Alto resident and say, yeah, in Redwood City, we we really do it a little different, and housing has been one of our top priorities for many reasons that we know for displacement. I I see it with um, you know, my students as a professor at Kenyatta College. I see, you know, where there are so many folks that can't be in part, in fact, they're not even registering for classes, many of them, because they've moved out, you know, to the low-income students that have done, and and just families. So I'm also very impressed with the work that you've done in the research, and I know I've met with some of you, and and you are really um passionate about finding out what it is that we can do and how we can support you, and and that you're lining up your goals with our goals, and and you are. And I just want to thank you for that, because every single one of the the strategies, the goals, and the areas that you have focused on have been so important to the work that we're doing and how we're trying to still accomplish. And and we have been in the region and especially in the county, the number one in producing the housing, but it doesn't mean that we're done. We we need to do a lot more. And when I, you know, hear of friends moving into trailers in other cities and other counties because they can't afford what they're doing, it's like, how can we bring some of that lower income possibilities to our city and and how to zip fit into all of our our landscape and our neighborhoods and and everything. So I'm looking forward to really reaching our arena numbers, to really doing more that that I I think that we 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 just can't do enough because there's such a great need. So thank you for the noble work that you do. I'm I'm very impressed with the what you've done and especially the research that you continue to do. So thank you for putting the effort into it. We're lucky to have you all in Redwood City, working with us.
Thank you, council member Aguirre. Council member Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And of course, I'd like to thank Chair Becker, Vice Chair Heester, and Ms Lancaster for the incredible work that you've done over the last two years. It is truly, truly impressive. And I don't mind saying this, but I really believe that the Housing and Human Concerns Commission is probably, in my opinion, the most impressive of the boards, commissions, and committees that we have. It is a labor of love that you attend these meetings in the way that you do. The way that you show up in our community has been so impressive to me. From the first time I moved here, I had was impressed with the work you do, from the CBDG funding to your advocacy around missing middle housing and so much more. I'd like also just to call out the incredibly fast and um effective work you did on the eviction moratorium. Um, you know, we as a community were faced with a really difficult decision. You're in a time of COVID. Things have not um really settled in a way that we would have hoped with this new Delta variant resurgence, and we really needed to move forward and we need to move quickly. And I was so pleased and so proud with the work that the HHCC did in helping the council prepare itself for uh the action that we might have taken if the state hadn't acted. So I just want to again give really special shout-outs, special props. So I just want to again give really special shout outs, special props to everyone on the commission. And I do have one question for you, well, actually, two questions. So the first question is about your teacher oriented housing work that was discontinued. And I understand that not every work stream can move forward ultimately because of different issues that come up. But I guess I'm wondering, what learnings did you kind of receive from that process in understanding what is feasible and what is not within the scope of your work plan?
So that actually was an ad hoc committee. Vice Chair Heester and I were the two members of, so. I will let you answer again, Kate. All right, great. Yes, so we I would say that we we cast a really wide net. Certainly, teachers were one of the the folks, the groups of folks that we were focused on. But as we talked about in the report, we were looking at the hospitals, at city staff. We were just sort of looking at who are the large employers of folks who really, you know, don't have jobs that can be outsourced, that we really need in our community and who can, you know, that we really need to be able to, you know, provide services here in Redwood City. And so we were looking very broadly. And I would say maybe that's the first learning I had was that 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 means a really wide set of needs. And that's probably not surprising to anybody, but that kind of the trying to streamline and ask effective questions of, you know, a teacher and a police officer. Maybe that sounds like the, you know, you're going to ask the same sorts of questions, but realistically, there are very different needs and very, very wide ranging things that we would want to learn from each of those groups. So that was that was a piece. I think the other part of it, from my point of view, was also what is the scope of the city, you know, the city's role in these pieces? And certainly for city staff members, that's something that we could look at very specifically. But as you're trying to move other kinds of employers and to work with other kinds of employers, that also was a complicating factor. And so sort of how, you know, how that that rolls out politically within an organization, all those kinds of things just made it a really complex thing to try to continue to move forward. So it's certainly something I think, you know, we remain interested in. But I, you know, I would say that I didn't feel like we had a really clear way of unifying all of all of that intention into something that we could move forward with kind of in a really clear way. I don't know if, Margaret, you have.
Just that we were not want for ideas.
Yeah, many ideas. But but I think, you know, if if we were to kind of go back to that, I would want to really narrow down into what does the city have jurisdiction to make decisions around, or at least to, you know, to change policies around? And what is the the narrow group of people that we're going to try to address rather than the entire workforce? So folks that we need in Redwood City, which is a pretty, pretty wide net for us to try to to capture.
Got it. Thank you so much for that insight. I will say that both of that, both of those learnings seem to be specific and potentially actionable on a move forward basis. So I would just say continue to take that lens to all of the work that you are looking to kind of take onto your plate. I think that with that consultative view, you'll be able to be even more effective in the future. And I guess my second point, my second question, and maybe it's somewhat of a comment, is, you know, your your value and your vision around missing middle housing is something that I'm very committed to as well as Chair Becker, you know, very personally. And I guess I'm wondering whether you think that the housing element process will help to drive that conversation along? Wondering if you could provide any insight into your vision on how we move the missing middle conversation forward?
I do think that it will be part of the work with the housing element, which, as you probably know, those revisions are just getting started. But yes, that is the first line of how we're intending to move missing middle housing along is through the revisions to the housing element. I'm not sure if Housing Leadership Manager Lancaster has anything else to say about that. But if you do, feel free.
I'll just add that it is one of the strategies that, you know, will be evaluated and, you know, brought to the city council and before the community. But as Chair Becker noted, we're still in the very early stages of that planning process. So more definitely to come.
Thank you so much for that, Ms. Lancaster. I think I was on mute for just a second there. I said this publicly and I'll say it again, that I'm very encouraged by the housing element process. And I specifically mean that in terms of our possible actions around upzoning and bringing the ability to develop more units in traditionally single family residences along. So I hope that the the HACC has a part in that conversation as well as Planning Commission and I suppose the Transportation Advisory Commission as well. So thank you again so much for your hard work and I look forward to hearing about the great things you do in the coming weeks and months.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor Hale?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Chair Becker and to Vice Chair Heester and to the entire committee and to staff member Lancaster, who I know works so closely with you. You know, the word that comes to mind to me for this group is initiative. The concept of these work plans is actually relatively new for the council and the commissions. I think they're only two, two, maybe three years old. I know as long as I've been on council, it had just started. But when I think about this group, you are already doing something like this. You are already putting together your plans. And I know this so personally because when myself and Councilwoman Ready started working on safe parking, there was already this incredible body of work that your commission had created. So we weren't walking into something new. And another example of that is we have a an offsite twice a year where we bring an idea. And my suggestion this year was around affordable ownership housing. And Assistant City Manager Kajinkian sort of cut me off and said, well, the HHCC is already working on this with land trusts. And and I thought, well, that's just so fantastic and typical of this group that you're already thinking ahead to the next opportunity and the next opportunity to make life better for our residents. And that's incredible. And thank you so much for that. Couple of comments and a question, picking up where Councilmember Smith left off. I would actually like to better understand in just a brief overview, what is going to be the division of labor on housing element between Planning Commission and HHCC? Can we put a finer point on that? Either staff or one of the members?
Again, I mean, I I don't think we're we've approached that. We're not far along enough in that process to to really know. And I don't know, Vice Chair Heester, do you have anything to say, or Ms. Lancaster?
I would just add that, you know, we do envision the Planning Commission and HHCC having a very proactive role with the housing element. Tentatively, we are envisioning a joint study session between the two committees sometime in the fall. Beyond that, I don't know the specifics of where else there may be coordination or collaboration amongst the two groups, but we do envision them being very active in this process.
Okay. Yeah, I would encourage our staff to have them brought in as early as possible. This is a really innovative group that works incredibly hard. And when I think about the white paper that you produced that was so fantastic, I think we should be looking at that and even further than that. The the collective reset that we have called for on on racial equity and on equity really does show up in this housing element. This is a real opportunity for that work to prove itself out, what that means. And I really would encourage you to be bold in your thinking. We're seeing a lot of innovative ideas coming out. And and this needs to be a process that the community is involved with. And I just know your your committee is going to be so great at being at being out there and being the eyes and ears and reaching people and embracing this conversation and having it. And then I'm very excited about land trusts too, because that is that is a generational wealth building opportunity. And that will change the trajectory of families' lives. That's why I was so excited about our Habitat for Humanity project, because it gives that ownership opportunity to to families. And that is really what it takes to to climb out of poverty and to stay out of poverty is something like that. So thank you for your work and keep the innovative ideas coming. We'll keep listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Yeah, so thank you for your presentation and everything that you've all presented. I echo so much of what everyone said, of course. I also wanted to highlight some of the priorities that y'all have that I'm most interested in seeing be discussed and fully fleshed out. You know, our further studies into the tenants ordinances and protections, because that is a major concern of ours. And I know we have work already. We have ordinances already that are intended to preserve housing, like the long one year term lease. And so I'm very interested in seeing what kind of solutions we can come up with to to strengthen the the policies, to ensure tenants are housed and there aren't any loopholes to this. As we experienced in the past, Redwood City has had tenants be very vocal, including our former resident, that was the director of One Redwood City, the tenants led housing org, Stasha Powell, someone who was evicted during this time of the housing ordinance because loopholes at the time. And so I really am in favor of anything that would be something like, you know, continuing our guaranteed housing ordinance as well as, you know, having a rent cap that is as close to to 0% as possible. You know, so there's not hikes as well for our renters during this time. I'm wondering if like this goes into exploring other things that, you know, contribute to the instability of housing and that is a human concern, like living wages and such. But so you can answer that or not directly. But those are just some things that I really want to see us flesh out and really strengthen for our for our residents, our renters especially. But in general, I'm very pleased with everything, like it's very well laid out, the analysis, seeing Redwood City working on anti displacement, you know, and just finally starting to have an equity initiative. It's I think throughout these work plans, it's more obvious how the Subcommittee for Social Justice and Equity has to create this mission statement that includes all the things that we've been saying over and over again to each committee and group. So, you know, we don't have to keep repeating how important it is and include everyone of all ages, of all abilities. And so it's just streamlined and I really just appreciate your understanding and just your care and just the work that's going to come and all the work that's been done. So thank you again for for all of this.
Thank you. I will I will just make one quick comment that we had we had thought about racial equity and social justice in forming our work plan. And it was something that we didn't include mainly because council had already formed their own Subcommittee. So in all of our work, that's why we adopted it as a guiding principle for our upcoming work plan. Because we really, that's going to be a part of every piece of our work. And also, when it comes to tenant protections, we it is one of our main five goals is to review protections that council adopted and also investigate potential new ones.
Stella, that's awesome. I really appreciate it. Oh, and I just remembered that I just wanted also just put my stamp of support on what Councilmember Smith said on upzoning as well. You know, moving forward on that kind of path for for, you know, creating affordable housing. That is all. But thank you again. Thank you so much for for your answers and for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate all the positive comments that were made by our colleagues and it's so well deserved. Having been a 10 year member of the Housing and Human Concerns Committee, I can tell you I truly enjoyed those years of learning and studying with a very dedicated group of people. And I I am so pleased with, you've really upped the ante. I, we we worked hard, but you're working harder, believe me. And maybe it's just a sign of the times and the way things are today. But I can't thank you enough for all the hard work and dedication that you do. You're a very proactive group. It's quite clear that you enjoy what you're doing and you enjoy the collection of information that help find solutions for our community. So I want to thank you. I really liked your guiding principles that you put towards everything that you do and that use of data, community engagement, but racial equity being right there and saying, we're going to examine it, look at it and see how it applies in everything we do. I want to thank you for that. Also, I want to thank you for your priority list. It was very clear and it's very proactive again. You know that one of my special, I really believe in housing preservation because I know that we don't have as much raw land and not much any at all in the Bay Area. But what we do have are a lot of older buildings that house quite a few people. And if we can be very proactive in preserving existing housing stock by renovating and bringing them up to speed, providing subsidy in some form or another so that we can have deed restricted rents for in perpetuity if we can. But the idea being that we are working with existing housing to make sure that it stays affordable for a long period of time. I spoke before ABAG and I spoke before Senator Scott Wiener. And they were both, they were surprised. They were not aware that with RENA numbers, you couldn't in the past count preservation of existing housing as Georgia RENA numbers. I was kind of appalled to see the looks of surprise on their face. So we're working on making sure that in the future, when you put money into dedicating housing in perpetuity to to maintain affordability, that should be counted because that takes a great deal of effort. It takes money, it takes time. And in the future, we may not have a many other options available to us. So I think I raised their awareness on that and I'm hoping we'll continue to do that, that they really need to consider that as part of RENA numbers and solving the housing problem. I want to thank you so much for your work and everything my council colleagues has said, I totally agree with. Thank you so much for what you've done. Thank you for being here tonight and continue your great work. You're already doing many of the things that we're asking you to do. You've been doing them for a long time. Thank you very, very much for being here this evening. So I'd like to ask council if we could put our stamp of approval on their work plan for fiscal year 2021-22 and fiscal year 22-23. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'd like to move the the recommendation for 2021, 2023 HHCC work plan.
Motion been made by Councilmember Ready and I believe the second was by Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
I'd like to ask for the roll call vote, please.
Start with Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 5D, our Senior Affairs Commission work plan for fiscal year 2020-2021 and fiscal year 2021-2022. Parks Recreation and Community Services Manager and Senior Affairs Commission Staff Liaison, Bruce Uteck, will introduce the item. And our Senior Affairs Commission Chair Hal Drager and Vice Chair Jody Paley will give the presentation. We'll start with you, Bruce.
All right. Thank you and good evening, Mayor Howard and City Council. My name is Bruce Uteck and I am the Community Services Manager here for Redwood City Parks Recreation and Community Services at the Veterans Memorial Senior Center, which makes me the liaison for the Senior Affairs Commissioner. I don't see if any of them, if any of there is, all right. So before we get into our work plan and our plant work plan update, I want to personally thank the Senior Affairs Commissioners for volunteering for the commission and also for their support during the pandemic. Their encouragement and their their leadership was a bright spot for myself and for my staff. So thank you, each one of them. With that, I will turn it over to you, Hal.
Thanks, Bruce. And I'd like to just pause for a moment too and turn around and acknowledge Bruce and his team for something that I think was absolutely stellar for our senior community. Uh, acknowledge Bruce and his team for something that I think was absolutely stellar uh for our senior community. I have a note here of a hundred and twelve thousand lunches. That were served to seniors during the pandemic and that is no small task. And there were a couple of other people that I'd like to call out for that too, and one of those happens to be an an active uh council member, Diana Ready. She was there every day giving out lunches and then former council member and former uh Senior Affairs Commissioner Janet Borgans was there every day. Serving luncheons and I I think that was just an amazing thing and kudos to all three of you. And especially to the staff who was behind the scenes doing all the hard legwork. So with that, I'd like to just move into the slides, um, um, you see the overview of of items that we're going to address. And like to go forward now into the next slide. Which is just a reminder that you guys can have some questions and uh we would love to have your comments. And that slide will show up again at the very end, next slide. This is um uh our committee, uh, our commission, uh, we have three new commissioners. I don't, uh, they they're last, they're the last three on the list, they they have brought something very special into our commission and I. I'm grateful for them and we have some amazing commissioners that are sticking around and uh. Uh, they they bring a sense of continuity and wisdom and we appreciate their assistance as well, next slide. Our role is basically advisory to the the city council and to the city manager. And especially around the establishment of programs and stimulating and encouraging development and maintenance of senior programs and services. And periodically review those programs, we also are there to to review and make recommendations to the council and city manager regarding. The funding of senior programs and services uh within the city. And then to serve as a conduit between the city council, other boards and commissions and the city's senior population, next slide. What we have accomplished in this this last uh biennium has been, I think, significant. Uh, we have been able to um facilitate a homeless roundtable with local agencies, including the Street Life Ministries. Redwood City's Homeless Services Manager, San Mateo County Aging and Adult Services in. In the person of the Deputy Director of uh Aging and Adult Services. Uh, we've had the San Mateo County Ombudsman Services and HIP Housing, all those uh. Uh, departments cross over with seniors and uh in many cases, uh, housing issues. And one of the things that we were wanting to look at was uh the issue of homelessness among seniors. There's a significant population of of homeless and that's where we had Street Life Ministries and we also had Officer Chris Rasmussen, now retired. Uh, he was a part of that because that was one of his uh responsibilities with with the Redwood City PD. Uh, and we have provided continuous input for matters concerning the new senior center and design content. Provided input for the Brad Bradford Street Housing Project, those are some of the things that we've done around housing. Uh, in the last bi- uh biennium and now onto the next slide please. Uh, housing for Redwood City seniors, uh, transportation for Redwood City seniors. And equity community for all ages are the three uh uh goals and priorities for us. Um, I'd like to just also note that while uh I've kind of recited some of the accomplishments. Those are not uh dead end things, you know, they don't stop because we finished a two year stint. Um, these things are going to continue uh throughout the the years ahead. One of one of the more significant things that we're going to be dealing with yet is uh the new senior center. Uh, the 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 ground was broken on Friday and uh. Uh, the great turnout of folks for that groundbreaking, but the groundbreaking isn't isn't the end of the road. There's going to be a building, there's going to be ultimate collaboration with the YMCA and the details of that are going to have to be worked out. Where we have the intersection of of youth and seniors coming together in buildings that are separated only by a sidewalk. And not a wide one at that, uh, and there's going to be a lot of overlap and and we are going to have to work together. Uh, to um to uh provide a seamless transition uh with these two programs. Uh, when YMCA moves over and joins us on um the on the parkland. Let's see, I think I have pretty much my one on the housing issues, what I expect us to be doing. Uh, one of the things that I thought was really excellent, we had a joint meeting with the Housing and Human Concerns uh Commission. And that was, I think, instructing for both them and especially for us. And we want to continue to have those kinds of of intersections going forward. Uh, we'll do that also with the San Mateo County Commission on Aging, we've had some connection with them and and that has been productive. As we gain more research, uh, information about the needs and uh of and resources available to seniors. Uh, Jody, you are a fellow cyclist and you have a heart for transportation. And so uh talk to us about transportation for Redwood City seniors.
I I will do Hal, um, I think we're behind a couple of slides. Because I think we have slides that had give us bullet points for this, can we advance, there we go, this is what Hal was just addressing. On housing and all what we have been doing, um, and so can we have the next slide please, so transportation. So some of the things, yes, Hal says, um, I get around some days on a funny bike. Uh, or walking or everything else as well as having a family member when we talk about. You know, equity and availability for for all sorts, I have a family member who often uses assistive devices. So we're quite aware of all of that. So some of the issues that we're looking forward at continuing on or working on. We need to update our knowledge of what are the needs for seniors. Um, for transportation within our community, both with the new facility. With the bicycle, you know, the Bicycle Boulevard on Vera and things that the Transportation Advisory Committee are working on. So we're working on creating a survey where we can reach out to as many seniors as we can get and. Initially, we thought this would work great with the drive through uh for picking up lunches that we could hand out surveys and pick them up the next day, but. As an equity issue, it probably wouldn't work with everybody, so we are going back, we are still working on our questions. And our intention is to be able to distribute it. Online for those of the younger seniors and older seniors who are comfortable with doing online. But as we know, some seniors are going to prefer to do something in a hard copy on paper. So it'll be something that we'll be able to reach out to seniors coming into the VMSC as it reopens. People at the Fair Oaks Senior Center and additionally at the Redwood Shore Senior Community Center. Um, which we're going to be starting programming out there for seniors in the shores in September. We've also going to be looking at other city sites such as maybe sitting with uh Mayor Howard at the Farmer's Market. And it's, you know, and giving out the survey at that point and other ideas if anybody would like to jump in with a place where we might want to. Um, maybe, you know, if I doubt it's going to, we're not going to be there that quickly enough to do. Any of the parks and rec events such as the music on the square or music in the parks, um, so that unless we postpone this all the way until next spring. Um, so that is one of the issues that we are looking forward to getting. That we can understand what seniors will need, what assistance to getting to the new facility. Um, we have been having liaisons between the Senior Affairs Commission and the Transportation Advisory Committee to talk about these, some of these transportation needs. Find out what TAC is working on in terms of the Vision Zero and all the things that they presented earlier this evening. But also sometimes to point out what they need to hear from, you know, from the senior community, um. And our final point that we're looking forward to is encourage and support. Street and sidewalk walkability for all, now that, like I said. You know, that can encompass things like the bulbouts which will slow down cars as well as shortening the distance that people have to cross. Um, you know, it may be, it's not always just walkability, sometimes it's just getting reports. Of what areas of the city where the sidewalks may not feel safe to a senior who is using an assistive device, whether that be a walker, a cane, a scooter. You know, a wheelchair, any of those types of things, so that's what we're working on with transportation. And I gotta thank, I want to thank you Mayor Howard, you brought up something I was going to consider, as we said, we've. Been doing little individual meetings with one or two other committees and commissions. And, you know, maybe it would be nice to have something that's cross city. Um, that would touch on people, you know, bring in somebody from planning, someone from senior fair, someone from TAC. And all of the, you know, somebody from the council and from staff. To all have like a once meeting or twice a year discussing transportation ideas, how we can all approach that. Do something like that, so we all know what everybody is working on in housing, so thank you for bringing that up because that was on my list. Um, so that's where we're at for transportation right now, so at this point, I believe um. Bruce is going to fill in for Barbara Bruchsky to talk about the community of for all ages on the next slide.
Sure, uh, Chairperson Chairperson Drager, do you want to go back a slide so you could uh talk about the other two bullet points? For the the housing, can we go, there you go.
There we go.
Can you just mention, talk about those two bullet points please?
The, uh, to advocate for housing availability for seniors at all income levels, that that is something that I I heard in the other presentations, especially human concerns. Um, you know, that having availability of houses for seniors, particularly those who may be downsizing. And, you know, living, wanting to stay locally, to find affordable housing for them, uh, uh, it is still a challenge. Would like, you know, what we've done for with the homeless seniors is we have prepared a brochure. And uh updated it now, uh, that's been out and that was just basically to be handed off to uh. Through the police department, other uh services, uh, uh, Street Life Ministries and the like. Where there's, where their their primary contacts oftentimes are with the homeless. And the meet with Housing and Human Concerns to identify needs and resources we've we've addressed.
Alright, so um I will be discussing uh equity and community for all ages. Um, so most of you know, in twenty nineteen, the city Redwood City is accepted as a member of the A A R P. Network of Age Friendly Communities, A A R P, if you don't know, American Association of Retired Persons. Um, the original lead agency was the World Health Organization, uh, about a year ago. It changed to A R P who basically raised the stakes and required us to uh create a task force. And come up with an ongoing action plan, so as a member of an age friendly community, uh, cities are required to meet certain conditions. To be certified and to be continued to be certified as age friendly. Um, so we've created a seven member task force, including city staff. Current and past city council members, current senior affairs commissioners. Uh, and staff from Peninsula Family Services Agency. And we're going to create and develop an action plan and evaluate our community's progress in becoming even more age friendly. Um, as part of the action plan, uh, one of the elements. The the task force will be working, um, they've given us eight domains of livability. Um, that we will be working on, examples of those are uh communication and information. Social participation, outdoor spaces and buildings, housing and transportation. Um, so they're 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 very similar to Redwood City's guiding principles, so we're very fortunate for that. Uh, but the one that we'll be working on uh is respect and social inclusion. Um, Redwood City has a very diverse senior population, but uh they are still vulnerable to discrimination and uh. Uh, forms of ages, ageism, so uh within this domain, we will be addressing the issue of equity towards seniors. By making them feel as as valued citizens, um, and honoring them for what they've, what what they have to offer, past and present. Um, and we're also be trying to remove the negative stereotypes of seniors by incorporating them more into our community. Um, a great way we're going to be doing that is we're going to be getting a new building coming down in a couple of years, so um. The pressure is going to be on us to deliver, so um, that's the one portion of that, and then the other part is that. Um, the Senior Affairs Commission will be setting up meetings with our youth and teen advisory board to listen to ideas. Uh, to listen and share ideas and create a program um of learning opportunities together. Part of this is that we want these multi generational meetings to serve as uh like the Senior Affairs Commission. As mentoring our youth in and becoming interested in uh local government, so. We'll show them how the Senior Affairs Commission works and maybe how other commissions work and then maybe they'll want to go see how the city council works. So uh that is our final uh equity and community for all ages, um, so next slide. Uh, if you haven't seen it, there's a picture. Of an artist rendition of what the new senior center is going to look like, um. It's 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 here, I can say some of us have been here, uh, Jody, way back in two thousand four when we started talking about this, so. This has been a long, long, long time coming, so we're very excited for this, uh, next slide please. And this is, um, we work hand in hand with the Fair Oaks Adult Activity Center uh with Laura and her staff over at Fair Oaks. Um, so they always attend our meetings, so we included him as part of, part of us, so uh next slide. Hal, I'll turn it back to you.
Alright, that concludes our report to you all and ready to receive your your questions and and comments and. Then you guys can vote on on our plan.
Thank you Chair Drager and thank you Vice Chair Paley and Mr. Uteck, thank you very much, please. Tell the other members of your commission who I see or hear uh that. We're also very grateful to them for being here this evening, great presentation. Uh, now I'd like to ask our city council, do you have any clarifying questions before we begin public comment? Seeing none, I will turn it over to our city clerk so she can do public comment, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you Mayor Howard, now's the time for a public comment on item five D, the Senior Affairs Commission work plan. If you'd like to make public comment, um, the instructions are on the screen, please raise your hand and keep your hand raised so we can see how many speakers we have. If you've called in, please press star nine to raise your hand. We don't have any hands raised, so this is um the last call, if anybody wants to raise your hand at this time. Mayor Howard, we don't have any um public speakers for this item.
Thank you Ms. Aguilar, but I do want to thank those members of the audience for staying and listening to the work plan of our Senior Affairs Commission. We really appreciate that and the work that they do, so now we will bring it back to the council for discussion. And end questions, who would like to begin? I'm guessing it'll be council member ready, there we go.
Thank you Mayor Howard, that is my job after all tonight. Um, thank you, um, Chair Drager and Vice Chair Paley for for your presentations and um to commission members for your. Uh, for this great work plan, um, and thank you so much, um, Chair Drager for your kind words. Um, I have to say that the gift was truly getting to know the extraordinary seniors that that are in our community. And to witness the extraordinary work that Mr. Uteck and his staff. Um, the the commitment that they have made to our seniors in this community, um, I, it really. Um, without exaggeration, blew me away because uh we had seniors who were um suffering from depression during this time. We had seniors who were, had some extraordinary questions about resources and they always knew. Um, who to turn to to get answers and so um I'm just so grateful to Mr. Uteck and his staff. Uh, for the work that they did during this very challenging time and to our commission members, you're amazing, um. You, um, again enthusiastically reached out to other seniors and um. Supported seniors in very different ways and I just thank you so much for your commitment and enthusiasm for this. Uh, very special part of our uh community. Um, I have nothing to add other than my, you know, praise and appreciation and uh. Vice Chair Paley, I just bought a bike. So I'm really excited to become, I used to be a very serious bike person and my daughter took my bike. So now I have my own bike and I can't wait to get out there and try it out. So.
I'll swing by and pick you up.
Thank you. I look forward to that. So when the time comes, I will approve the work plan. But other than that, I have no comments other than to sing your praises and to thank you so much for the work on the work plan and for your commitment to our seniors. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready. Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Chair Drager, Vice Chair Paley and our staff, thank you for everything you can do for our seniors, especially during the last year and a half. And I guess it's still counting depending on your beliefs. But what an unusual time to to try to get through everything. And thank you for keeping sure that our seniors are well and safe through an extraordinary period of time. Chair Drager, you know, when I was previously on council, we had a conversation about our seniors out here in Redwood Shores. And I think, I'm not sure exactly where things are because of this unusual time we've just come through. But I suspect whether it's real or from a perception standpoint, there's still more work to be done for our seniors out here to feel that there are services and programs for them here in the shores. So my question is, what can we do, what can I do to make sure that our seniors here feel that there are programs available on Redwood Shores for those? I've grown up with the kids at Ralston and Carlmont and those parents now are seniors and they're still here on the shores. What can we do for them? How can we help them feel more connected, better served? Or deal with what they feel they aren't? And how can we address that?
Councilmember G, I think it could be useful for us to have a sit down, either virtually or in person, have some conversations about what does it look like? You live there, you know that community intimately. And I would be very willing to pick your brain.
Offer taken and accepted. Be happy to do that. And I want to, you know, my purpose is to get stuff done. And so hopefully whatever we decide to do doesn't take as long as the new senior center. And we can do it in half the time. We're much sooner than that.
I hope nothing takes that long.
Well, I know electrification took 40 years. One-on-one wood site still counting. And hopefully something we can do can do be done much quicker. But they will reach out and we'll see what we can do and see how we can build that bridge and that connection with our seniors out here on the shores.
Sure. And if Councilmember G, if I can chime in here, before the pandemic, we did have six classes that we were going to start from blood pressure screening to lectures to the mandolin orchestra. All that was to start in March of 2019, but the pandemic happened. I will say the last couple of months, that was, we had a group called A New Vista and they were teaching computer classes out Redwood Shores. They started here at the senior center and they were doing classes out in Redwood Shores. We also have a partnership with another group called Trevande. And they were there, have produced, we've done, I believe, 65 Zoom classes for the seniors in the last, probably since last October. We also had them connect with the self-help for the elderly and they did have done two programs. One was called Listening and Healing Circle for the Asian Elderly Community. And that was in June. And then last week they had another, it was Nutrition and Healthy Living for the, Healthy Living for the Asian Elderly Community. These were Zoom classes and they were presented, the presenters, the whole thing was spoken in Cantonese. I know that the first one had about 40 people attend, so we're going to continue to do those. And in September, we now have secured a room at the Sampdoria Community Center on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. We will be starting blood pressure screening out there as well as a chair exercise, chair yoga class. And we're working on it. So we're going to be getting classes out at the Sampdoria Community Center in September. We'll also, if you have your way to go pass and you need us to market that for you, please send it on over and we'll be glad to put it out in our newsletter when the time comes.
I will. Bruce, thank you for sharing that. And I think as we've learned through COVID, which was something, unless somebody knew it was coming and didn't tell anybody, we were all surprised by it. And so I don't look at the last two years as a good, you know, this is the way, you know, it's a success moving forward. And as we learned during COVID, that digital divide does exist. It even exists out here on Redwood Shores, just mainly due to infrastructure mishaps. And with our seniors, they are also vulnerable to the digital divide. And so hopefully COVID will allow some in-person activities coming up where they can connect emotionally, mentally and physically with other seniors.
Yes.
As, you know, Chair Drager and Vice Chair Paley, you indicated that connection is very, very important to our seniors. So looking forward to that. So Chair Drager, I'll be reaching out and Bruce, thank you for that update. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I want to thank Chair Drager, Vice Chair Paley, and of course, Mr. Ucheck for the fantastic presentation. I'll keep my comments brief, but I will say that I am always impressed by the seniors of Redwood City. The amount of energy that you all bring to your activities is is very, very much admirable. It's something that I have not seen in other committees, communities, excuse me. And you can just see it in the work that you've done with the senior center. I mean, it's just a fantastic project that's been finally been put into fruition. Was really happy to be able to join all of you at the groundbreaking on Friday. And I'm super excited for progress to begin and for the ribbon cutting to happen. So again, just want to thank everyone on the committee for your great work. I'm also very, very happy with your particular focus on, of course, equity. Absolutely is something that the senior community should be focusing on. I do have one question about it. I'm kind of interested, I've been, you know, reading a little bit about our working seniors. And I'm wondering if there was any conversation or thought specifically around that community of working seniors and how we can accommodate the needs that they kind of uniquely bring to the community.
Our experience going back to 2004 is we've been, we were waiting for the baby boomers for a real long time. And I think we're still waiting for them. The Gen Xers are starting to pop in. But traditionally, we, most of our activities are geared towards the older seniors, 75 plus. We do have a lot of classes that we offer through the Parks and Recreation brochure for adults. And then we also have older adults. But we are very hopeful and excited that with the new building, we'll bring new seniors, younger senior and possibly working seniors. They just work nine to five. Most of our programs go into the daytime. We do have the evening programs. But most of the time, you know, you work an eight hour day and people either go home and rest and don't think much about recreating. So we're, we're ready for them.
Yeah. So I appreciate the candidness in your comment, Mr. Ucheck. I would just kind of continue to encourage you to think about this community of working seniors, you know. At the end of the day, retirement is is a privileged position to be in. Just to, just to be quite honest with you, I'm looking forward to the day when I can be retired, to be honest. I got a long way to go, but I'm looking forward to it. And so just to, I say all that to say is that there are some seniors in our community who who still have to work. And, you know, they, they probably can't afford to schedule in activities between eight and five. And so I just, you know, again, continue to encourage you to think about this particular segment of the population that still needs services, but may not have the particular flexibility of other seniors in our community.
The one thing that we do get from the working seniors is they're checking in a lot of information and referral for their parents. That's been, that's been huge during COVID is our INR that we've been doing. When people just calling in, you know, it started off with, where do I get my vaccination? Where do I get my lunch? What, you know, and all that stuff. So that is usually the the main, the main way we get the working seniors is through our information and referral.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate it so much. Oh, thank you. Yeah, Vice Chair Paley.
Yeah, Bruce, and Councilmember Smith. I think some of the things that we're, that we have seen over the years is the working seniors do tend to be the boomers and such as opposed to our elderly seniors. And what we have noticed over the years at the senior center is where the bulk of the of the programs had to do with the clubs. And younger seniors, you know, or up and coming seniors are not club joiners, but they are looking for projects to work on. And I know through wider circle, they, you know, and through New Vista, we were looking at some things like that to help people get involved that might not be coming to a regular program. You know, but maybe that's going to change once we have the new facility finished. But that may be looking for like one Saturday a month type of activities. There has been some programming around that. And but I think that's something we can, as a commission, can look at and work with the friends of the veterans, Memorial Senior Center, the board who does more of the programming type out, you know, type of things around the facility.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that response.
Sure.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hale?
Thank you, Mayor. I will try to be brief, but I don't want to, I don't want to cut the amazing work of our senior commission short. So Chair Drager and Vice Chair Paley, thank you both so much in your entire commission and staff member Utrack. It's, you know, we learn so much sometimes from just doing these these annual check-ins. And I'd say a big highlight for me from your presentation was learning around about the homeless round table. And there's just not another group that I could have suggested you have, would have had at that table. It sounds like you did an amazing job of bringing all the right people together to really understand homelessness among seniors. So I really appreciate that work. It is, it is a real, it is a real and unfortunate trend. And getting ahead of it by understanding what are the situations that lead to that is very important. That was certainly something that Councilman Ready and I saw in our time working on the Safe Parking Program was was unfortunately a number of seniors in that position. So that's really, that's really helpful work. I wanted to take a moment on the mental health line of work. I think that's so important. And my working theory is that things got, you know, very bad for very many during COVID and that though, you know, in some respects, COVID is better managed. That may not be better managed. And so how are you thinking about gaining an understanding of the impact across our senior community? Have you thought, what are the ways in which you're trying to sort of quantify that? Or better help us understand what it is we're dealing with here? You know, everything from memory loss to depression, which was mentioned, so that we have a real sense of the scale of what we're seeing? Or are you, are you working or partnering with another, you know, organization that collects that type of data? Because I personally am very curious to understand that.
So we've never collected that that kind of information about mental health. We do, since all of our partnerships, Sequoia Hospital, Sequoia Healthcare District, Adapted PE, what we do is we, whenever they ask, we offer classes. Some of our Zoom classes did discuss that. And it's just basically talking to them and listen, listening to what, well, during the pandemic, what was, you know, what are you concerned of? What is scaring you? What are you afraid of? And surprisingly enough, it was, the issue started with, they couldn't get their haircut anywhere. And they couldn't get their toenails cut. And I know that sounds, for most people, it sounds silly. But when you're a senior, you know, your, what you look like is, is, can be tough enough for them. But just through the COVID, they have told us over and over again that we were the only people that they talked to all day. And that still is, before COVID, we knew that they would come in. Give you an example, if they're 90, which we have a lot of, their children are 70, their grandkids are probably in their 50s. So for most of them, we're the only ones that they talk to all day. And so staff is very, we are out there, we are in there with them, talking and participating with them in their programs. When they come back, we always do that. Our Adapted PE group, they do, gosh, they did 104 different YouTube classes during the pandemic for free, just so people could get different levels of exercising. From chair exercise to a circuit class to just exercising with your fingers and your mind. They also did a lot of classes. We have a Parkinson's disease component, three different classes through the, through Adapted PE to do that too. But mental health, socialization for them is is huge. Just getting them here and being with us rather than sitting and watching TV all day is is pretty much what we do.
Well, I would encourage whatever else we could do to learn more specifically around around that. I really think we are facing a mental health crisis and that, you know, people will say we're reopening, things are getting back to normal, but a lot of people don't feel normal. And I think you have your fingers on an important pulse in our community that was very particularly targeted by this disease. And the opportunity to help us build a bridge to them with the right services. So I think it was mentioned for another commission, hey, it would be great to get more frequent updates. I would, for myself, say, you know, should you stumble on more of these insights, it would be a welcomed email to learn what it is you're seeing and things that we could be doing. Because this is a really vulnerable population and we want to be doing everything we can for them. Jody, it was great to hear you talk about transportation and kudos to Councilman Ready for getting a bike. And I think if every member of council had a bike and walked and, you know, you just, you learn so much by being out there and seeing the little things, this pothole makes it difficult to ride and this car being parked on the sidewalk makes it difficult to walk. And it's so important. And I'm just so impressed that there is even a transportation component. Several council meetings ago, we were all waxing poetic about sidewalks and sidewalk safety. So trust that there is a lot of energy from the council on that issue. And I know that's really important to this population as well. And and then other than that, multi-generational, you know, I think the new center presents this opportunity. But we also just opened up a Royal Green, which is the Affordable Senior Housing with childcare on the bottom. And there's a programming element to that where the seniors are going to be working with, some of them will be volunteering with the children. And I would love it for this commission to to understand what's the impact of that type of program on our seniors? Because I've heard, I've heard about other studies where this has been attempted and piloted in other parts of the country. I think it's really innovative and something that we could be learning from and potentially scaling in some of the programming at our new center where you have, you know, you have right next to each other, children and seniors. And how could that make for a richer, more vibrant community and make everybody happier? So I see a lot of opportunity. I think you have a phenomenal work plan and I'm so grateful for all of you and your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Councilmember Agirre?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, gosh, this is amazing. I can't wait to go to the senior center, the new one, and just be part of it and enjoy, join some of the folks that were, that have done such great things for our community. But more importantly, I love the concept of the multi-generation because I think that it benefits children and it benefits the seniors and families. So I agree with what was said earlier about looking into the mental health. That has been an issue. I have a 90-year-old dad that I take care of. So I know. And I wish that we had more things, you know, for folks, especially those that feel homebound and don't know that they can go or that they have that type of transportation and how we're working on, you know, continuing to do outreach for not only the folks that that are know about it, but the ones that don't. You know, we know that we have Meals on Wheels and other things that benefit them. You know, we know that we have meals on wheels and other things that benefit them. How can we connect those folks? Um, I know I've delivered meals and I see how homebound they are. How can we connect those folks to programs? And the digital divide, how important that is. I have been part of programs where we promote, um, teaching seniors how to use, um, different, uh, iPads and different things and connecting with their grandchildren and their families across, um, countries and across states. And I think that's really important that we continue to do that. And just like we were able to offer, um, computers and hotspots to students. You know, if we can do that with our seniors as well, so that, you know, they, once we teach them, we give them the tools. But we also kind of get them out to do other things and know that they can be, uh, that social piece that you mentioned and how important that is for the mental health and how, um, just, just the hearing of, of the programs and, and Bruce and Harold and Jody and, and the whole commission, that the work that you do is, is so important. And, and it fits into everything that we've been listening to tonight because it talks about housing, it talks about transportation. You know, housing and human concerns. And so this kind of puts the icing on the cake for, of a population that we are all going to be a part of or, or have family that is a part of. And and I look forward to being a part of that as well. So thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Aguirre. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Yeah, I just want to give a closing statement. So yes, um, cause already I'm very, um, happy with the work that is planned out by the committee. And I look forward to just seeing what's going to be done with the new Memorial Center. Um, I used to visit, I used to be in the old one a lot because, uh, I was part of a student-run theater company in high school that would rent it out all the time. Um, so I would be, yeah, grab bag theater.
Yeah, we still do stuff with them.
Yeah. Oh my goodness. Okay. So I used to do a lot of stuff. I was acting and I was like a costume head and vocal director and stuff. So like I used to like really spend a lot of time in there. So I'm really excited to see what's been going on and, you know, um, I work for the county of San Mateo as an in-home support service and, and home support services, um, taking care of my grandmother who's, you know, in her seventies. So I've been relying on, um, you know, the food delivery services as well to, to get through, because all the work, um, that goes into caregiving, um, you know, spending time going to appointments, um, translating and such like that. And just, I know it's such an issue, uh, for, for her because she is also disabled. So, um, you know, the transportation stuff, the, what she looks forward to the most is her senior center, you know? And during this time, it's been very, very difficult as a disabled, um, senior herself, you know, um, who, who did retire but doesn't, um, you know, lives with us, you know? So there's many people who, who, um, feel very isolated. And I, I'm so glad that was brought up to by Vice Mayor Hale and others, um, the mental health issues that we're facing right now because, um, because of the, of this, uh, COVID epidemic. I'm going to get emotional.
Well, the, the good thing is that, um, for our eight domains of livability, I'm writing what everybody's saying and, oh, there's one called civic participation employment. So I wrote working seniors and drew an arrow to that one. Um, there's another one called health services and community support. So mental health, I drew a arrow to that one. Um, social participation, I put the Aurora Green multi-generational to that one. So we will be, um, all the committee members will have to turn in, we've all been assigned different, uh, um, the, of the eight domains, we've all been assigned one or two. And so we're just going to start plugging stuff in as we go. Um, we, Redwood City is already providing, as we've all heard tonight, a lot of these things. So, um, with this work plan, we'll just start plugging this stuff in and, um, in August, everybody's supposed to turn their, their domains and their information. And so we're, we're moving forward on this.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry about that. But it's, it's, um, I'm just very proud of the work that's being supported. And I hope that, you know, it continues to, to just get, to just get better because you're absolutely right about the ableism and the ageism. And I hope that with, you know, this, uh, inter, you know, we have multiple, multiply, I don't know the word at the moment, but you know, having many age groups coming together, talk about, um, co, like coexisting and living and, um, would actually just be, and hopefully there'd be more opportunities for like context between each other and also an acceptance and learning of aging and appreciation of the privilege of getting older and just also accepting, um, the natural things that happen, um, like, um, uh, disability, illness, and then understanding other things that are happening as we get older, like, uh, mental illnesses. Uh, if we live longer, we start to see things increase like, um, like populations with Alzheimer's and dementia and the like.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So, yeah.
We, the, the, like I said, the, the key for all of this is to get the seniors here and talk and they can talk with each other. Um, I won't get into a long story because I know it's late, but I asked one of the seniors, I said, the, the lunch doesn't start until twelve. Why do you get here at nine? And he said, well, he goes, did you ever injure yourself in like sports? And I'm like, yep. And he goes, so it goes away when you're young. He said, when you turn thirty, you're like in the wintertime, oh, my, my, that hurts. He goes, and then when you turn forty, it kind of hurts in the winter and in the summertime. And he goes, when you turn fifty, it hurts all the time. By the time you're eighty or ninety and have four decades, he goes, it makes you really grumpy. He said, so I like to get here. He goes, I like to get a good seat because I don't have to get up and, and go all the time and I don't see very well and I don't hear very well. So that is why I get here early. And until you've experienced that, what, either with yourself or with your parent, it's kind of not on your radar. So those are the things by, we're hoping to point out by working with the youth advisory and the teen commissions through a multi-generational meeting. So that's what we're hoping to do.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I'm gonna stop talking now. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your work plan. Um, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. And I also wanted to say, uh, I don't know if, uh, everyone gives you enough credit for the fact that you're always looking to collaborate and partner with other groups in the community. And I, I know that you've done with Kaiser and with Sequoia Hospital, uh, many different groups at Samaritan House and other groups and organizations, wherever you can contribute to help our seniors, you do. So thank you. And they have some such wonderful programs, you're also able to, you know, refer them to that. I was, that's why I'm so pleased to see that you're going to update your brochure, your resources for, I, I'm guessing not only homeless seniors, but for seniors in general, because seniors just, um, that I'm sure there's a wealth of information they're not getting. And if you can put it into a cohesive booklet of some kind, the county used to do it. I used to count on those booklets and I don't think they do it anymore. So if you can pick up the slack and you can offer that, I would really appreciate it because those are the kind of informational bulletins I'd be happy to pass out wherever I go. It, it's much needed information, not only for the seniors, but the people taking care of the seniors. Sometimes they just don't know where to go for answers and those brochures can be a lifeline for them. So thank you for doing that. Um, I, I wanted to say, one of the most important things that you're doing was in your mission. And I just wanted to call it out because it's so important. You're working to address the issue of the, of equity towards seniors by making them feel valued as citizens, honoring them for what they have to offer and trying to remove the negative stereotype of seniors by incorporating them more and more into our community. These intergenerational, two examples that we have given, a Royal Green and the future Veteran Senior Center with the YMCA are two excellent examples of intergenerational activities where we're going to bring multi-ages together and respect both. So I, I think it's a win-win for the whole community. Thank you so much for all the work that you do. You work hard. You not only do your work plans, but you're out there volunteering and going to many different groups and organizations to give your message. I know that the Qantas would love to have you at the farmer's market. They, they would, then there'll be a table and I'll be happy to introduce you to them and get you set up if you'd like to do a survey or hand out brochures of any kind. I think it would be lovely. It's there on Saturday morning and it's there for you to do. So thank you again for the work you've done and thank you to Chair, oh, there he is, Chair Drager and Vice Chair Paley and Mr. Ucheck and all of the members of the Senior Affairs Commission for being with us here this evening to share your work plan and your positive message. Thank you. So I would like to, um, I think I did hear, uh, a motion by Councilmember Ready. If that still stands, and is there a second?
Second by Hale.
Second by Vice Mayor Hale to approve the Senior Affairs Commission work plan for twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one and fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two. And I'll turn it over to our city clerk for the roll call vote.
We'll, we'll start with Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Yes.
Councilmember G?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale?
Yes.
And Mayor Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. I'd like to thank the four commissions who came this evening for sharing your work plans with us tonight. I'm really looking forward to the year ahead. We can now adjourn until our next city council meeting scheduled for July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. I want to wish everyone a wonderful evening and a very healthy and peaceful week ahead. Good night.